We're going to convene our regularly scheduled meeting in the open session City Council. Madam Clerk, if you could please take a roll call and then we'll go straight to the invocation.
Absolutely. Councilmember Giroux?
Here.
Councilmember Nichol?
Present.
Councilmember Purstuck?
Here.
Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Here.
And Mayor Boyle?
Here.
Alright.
Thank you. Alright, we're honored to have the invocation led by Father Alexi Smith of St. Andrew's Russian Catholic Church. And then followed by that, we'll have Councilmember Purstuck lead the pledge of allegiance. So if you could all please rise.
Let us pray. Oh Heavenly King, the Comforter, the Spirit of Truth, who are everywhere present and filling all things, Treasurer of blessings and giver of life, come and be with us this evening as our City Council meets. Oh God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life and for the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Enable all who will participate in this meeting, be they council members and the members of our city staff, members of the public providing input. Enable them all to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Empower them to speak with clarity and restraint. Grant them a spirit of service to our community. Remind them that we are all stewards of your authority. Guide them to be the leaders both of us who live and work in our community need. Help them to see the humanity and dignity of those who may disagree with them and to treat every person with the reverence your creation deserves. Renew all of us with the strength of your presence and the joy of maintaining El Segundo as a community worthy of the human person. Enable all of us to use wisely the gift of our city which you have so graciously entrusted to us that we might be all closer to you and to one another and to the eternal blessings you promise. May we never forget those of our residents who are less fortunate than are we? We ask this as your sons and daughters sustained in your goodness and love. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Alexi. It's always great to see you here and thank you, Councilmember Purstuck. Alright, we've got three special presentations. First up is the Spark of Love proclamation, which is going to be read by Mayor Proton Pimentel.
Whereas, in an effort to provide for children who otherwise might not experience the joy of the holiday season, the City of El Segundo Fire Department, along with other Southland Fire agencies, has participated in the Spark of Love program for the past thirty years and collected toys and food items donated during the holidays. And whereas, the ever upward spiraling cost of living burdens disadvantaged and displaced families who may not be able to give gifts during the holiday season without help from Spark of Love program. And whereas, the true holiday spirit is reflected in unselfish giving and our thoughts and hearts go out to those less fortunate than ourselves. And whereas, in the past, with the help of civic-minded citizens who live and work in our community, hundreds of toys plus food items have been collected and distributed to children and families in El Segundo and other South Bay cities. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, do hereby proclaim November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two through December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, as the Spark of Love Toy Drive. The community is encouraged to support this holiday program by contributing toys and non-perishable foods to the El Segundo Fire Department, Fire Station Number One at three fourteen Main Street during the period of November fourteenth through December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you.
Alright, I think we have new Fire Battalion Chief Casey Snow. Alright, just joined us recently, we learned, right? Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
I just received my badge today. Thank you. So we're very happy to accept this proclamation and do this again like we've done in the past and change the lives of children. So we can donate in several ways. You mentioned at Station One on Main Street, also via text as well as a website. Elsegundo dot F D dot org is the website to find out all the information. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much and welcome. Thanks.
Thank you.
You want to accept, let's accept it and maybe do a photo. Sure, I'm going to have you step back to, excellent, excellent, very good. Oh, you guys know how to do it. Alright, here we go. Couple more. Great, thank you so much. Alright, next up we have Councilman Nichol with the recognition that he's going to read.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope people are tuned in. I think sometimes in life a thank you can go a long way. A piece of paper doesn't mean much, but a sincere thank you from five people who understand what you're going through, I think means the world. So commendation, City of El Segundo, California. Whereas on Sunday, July eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, the Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant suffered a devastating flood that resulted in the overflow of untreated wastewater into Santa Monica Bay affecting the citizens of El Segundo. And whereas, the ongoing odor issue have led to nearly fifty AQMD notices of violation as well as a water board violation. And whereas, since the incident, the citizens of El Segundo have been dedicated advocates for their communities, writing letters to elected officials of Los Angeles sanitation, speaking at City Council meetings, reaching out to local media contacts to spread awareness, activating local community members and informing them on how to report these issues, spending countless hours on call with AQMD and much more. And whereas, local governments are best able to meet the needs of their communities by working hand in hand with the advocacy and activism of private citizens who work to make a difference for the good of their community. And whereas, the City of El Segundo recognizes the citizens of El Segundo for exemplary civic engagement in regards to raising and addressing the ongoing odor and noxious gas issues from Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant. Now therefore, on this first day of November, two thousand twenty-two, the mayor and members of City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, hereby commend the citizens of El Segundo for their unwavering commitment to finding a solution to this massive spillage. And I believe we have El Segundo resident and Environmental Committee Member Cory Zupo, who's been a vocal leader here on the west side of town, sends a spill here to receive the commendation. Cory, if you can come up? Yeah. I'm sure you can give us a little anecdotal on how much time it takes to place the numerous calls that are needed for a violation to actually be registered.
About six minutes. It's very painful.
There you go.
Especially when your bosses are being a little vocal.
And how many times have you made these phone calls?
Um, probably like two hundred, it feels like.
And your Facebook group, Hyperion Facebook, that group, that private group you have, how many members are in that?
There's about one thousand two hundred.
And would you say almost every single person of those twelve hundred people have sat through that six-minute phone call and made a complaint?
Yeah, the AQMD said, year-to-date, I think they've gotten over three thousand complaints. So, yeah, people have been pretty vocal. Now they have a new app that you could use that saves your information. But with this new order of abatement, they're going to want you to do two, a complaint to Hyperion and then a complaint to AQMD. Which I know is going to be a pain for the community, but it's important that we still do both because Hyperion will immediately, they're supposed to immediately address it when we let them know. But then by letting the AQMD know, it, you know, will then let the air district know to follow up, so.
Well, I can't speak for my fellow councilmembers, but I think I'm speaking for them by saying thank you to you, thank you to everyone on the west side that has had to endure this. And if at any moment in time it has ever appeared as if we don't care or we're non-responsive, when you sit in these chairs, sometimes your hands are tied behind your back unwillingly, willingly, willingly? It was coming. Yeah. But so this is a thank you to you. We just want to recognize the effort, the ongoing effort, because we know it has not stopped and it will continue. So if you'd like, we can take a picture.
Yeah, sure.
I want to ask a question. Yeah, can I ask a question real quick, Cory?
No.
Sorry, you're my neighbor, so I figured you'd come for it. Did you do the tour yet with Hyperion? That was one of the things we asked for. I know that it was a limited amount of people, but I was wondering if you actually had the opportunity to do that tour.
Yeah, I did the tour last year on, in August. I didn't sign up for this year.
No, I remember that one, but I mean this immediate one?
Yeah, I couldn't because we had an obligation with the kids.
Yeah.
But it is helpful for residents. And I was going to say, one more thing that we're working on in the background is USC. I emailed pretty much every university. USC was the only one that got back to me. And USC has a grant that they got to study H two S, just H two S unfortunately, but they got the grant and they've been studying it in Carson. And they're willing to do the City of El Segundo as well. And the reason why this is important is the information they get in their published study, we could use in the future. So like if we have this issue again and we need to get state regulators involved or Senator Ben Allen with his rulemaking, we'll have one more tool in our toolbox. So what they want to do is study like the immediate impacts and then the long-term and do, also do physical studies of residents that sign up. So they'll like look at their blood and whatever other things doctors look at. So it's in the works, but it's a long process as you know, so I just wanted to add that because I'm really excited once that goes to par.
I just want to say we're fortunate because not only have you been driving this effort, but I know when that, did that tour happen yet, Daryl, the one I was mentioning?
I think it's next week.
Does it happen yet with the residents? Hyperion is hosting some of our residents? Okay. I saw an email where you were actually instructing people, Mrs. Zupo, in terms of what to look for. So it's not just that you've been driving this effort, but your subject matter expertise in this particular area is very valuable and we feel very strongly, we're thankful for everything you've done. It's a marathon. I feel like we're, I know it doesn't sound like we're making progress, but the fact that we've got Senator Ben Allen paying attention, that you've been working with Supervisor Mitchell's office along with the city staff, they're paying attention. I don't know if there's an update on the legal action, we'll hear about that. There's several irons in the fire and it's really helped having the community as a large group of stakeholders being loud and vocal and consistent about how big of a nuisance and potential health concern this is, so.
And I think I'll post some questions for the community to ask on the Facebook page because I worked at a power plant and refineries. Every time we give a tour, we have a very specific route. It's a planned route. You don't deviate from the route. So that's what they're going to do obviously. And so they're not going to show you the control equipment that has the broken gauges or the tarps over pots. They're going to avoid that. So I'll have like very pointed questions for the community to ask.
We saw the tarps. We saw the tarps. They showed us specifically where they couldn't get the custom-made or custom fabricated part, you know, the covers for the tank. So they showed us that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, and is there anyone else here? Good point, Mrs. Zupo is here with you.
Tracy Millers Arne, I can never see Tracy's last name even though I've known her for years.
Environmental Chair Tracy Millers Arneke.
Sarah Meyer, Kyle, I forgot Kyle's last name, I'm sorry. Wheeler does so easy. I don't know if you guys want to come up?
Please do. Yeah, thank you.
Megan, do you want to come up? Is there anybody else I'm missing?
Well, let's do, you want to do a photo?
Yeah, but thank you. Thank you for the continued effort. Thank you for what you do and it's, I don't wish it upon anybody and, you know.
Okay, we've just, we've got a big group, so we've got to back up a little bit, back up a little bit. Yeah, back, 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 a little bit back. Come on. Alright. Beautiful. Very nice. Alright, you got everybody? Alright, here we go. Couple of photos, guys. Alright kiddos, here we go. One, two, and, one, two, and, and one more. Beautiful. Thank you. Okay, we have one more special presentation this evening that Councilmember Purstuck will read.
Alright, so we have a proclamation here. Whereas in twenty seventeen, Paquai, a five-year-old, was suffocated by his biological father during an approved court visit despite his father's history of abusive behavior and his mother Anna Estevez's plea to the court to protect him. And whereas, to honor Paquai and all the California children who have been murdered by a divorce, by a divorcing or separating parent and the conservative, and conservatively estimated fifty-eight thousand US children annually are being court-ordered into unsupervised visitation with an abusive parent. And whereas, the mission of the FCAMC is to increase awareness on the importance of empirically-based education and training on domestic violence and child abuse, including emotional, physiological, psychological and sexual abuse and well as, as well as childhood trauma, coercive control and post-separation abuse for judges and all professionals working on cases within the family court system. And whereas, the mission at FCAMC is to increase awareness on the importance of using scientifically valid, evidence-based treatment programs and services that are proven in terms of safety, effectiveness and therapeutic value. And whereas, the mission at FCAMC is to educate judges and other family court professionals on evidence-based, peer-reviewed research. Such research is critical, is a critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interests of children. This research includes the adverse childhood experiences ACEs study, child custody evaluators, beliefs about domestic abuse allegations and child custody outcomes in cases involving parental alienation and abuse allegations. Now therefore, on this day of November, November first, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo hereby proclaim November twenty-second, November two thousand twenty-two as Family Court Awareness Month and encourage all the citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the harm of children in the hands of family members and to honor the value and lives of children. And there's no one here accepting this award, but I just want to say, do a shout-out to all the people that work with, work with foster care and other agencies and one specifically the CASA program, who are really core, devoted advocates for children during these type of custody battles.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Councilmember Purstuck. Alright, we're going to do public communications. After that, we have a Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant update from our city manager, Mr. George, but now is the time and place for public comments. And Madam Clerk, do we have any cards?
And I might just say first, I'm sorry, that this is for public communications and it is not for politicking. That is, this is not the appropriate place for people to speak on behalf in favor of or against council candidates or other candidates for office or for ballot measures. Those matters are considered not to be city business under California law. So please ask the public to not comment on those matters during public communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ansley.
Alright, first up is Julie Hollup.
Julia Hollup.
Good evening. My name is Julie Hollup. I'm an El Segundo resident and a mom to two girls at Richmond Street. I'm speaking in reference to item D thirteen, a staff presentation by Rec Parks and Library Director Ally Mancini on Phase One improvements of Rec Park, particularly Project One F, the demolition of the lawn bowling court. One of the items she will mention for that area is an outdoor space for teens. I'm the head of a one hundred and ten member group in town trying to create an outdoor space for all teens, but specifically designed with pre-teen and teen girls in mind. The group was begun after an article titled "We Need More Space For Girls" garnered a lot of interest on the El Segundo Parents Network. There's a clear inequality of public space devoted to older boys and older girls and the funding put into those places. This is not just El Segundo, but worldwide. Outdoor space for teens, fields, courts, skate parks, are almost exclusively used by boys. Nationwide, skate park use skews ninety-five percent boy. Girls report feeling judged, harassed, unsafe in those boy-dominated spaces. By age nine, fourth grade, girls are four times less likely to use park space. When our teens use playgrounds designed for the younger kids, they're seen as too big, too loud invaders. They head over to Starbucks where they are also seen as invaders. Girls are designed out of public space at a crucial age in their development when they should be increasing their autonomy and developing an independent life. Parks and public spaces are crucial in establishing a sense of belonging and community. The less girls use them, the less they're involved in public life, not just as teens, but as adults. These are public spaces created for use by all of our community. Let's not forget these young people again, the way they've been regularly ignored in the past. We have an opportunity here to do better and to be a leader in this area. I met with a group of teen and pre-teen girls and what they would like is very simple. Wide circular benches, a variety of swings that fit their bodies, semi-private group space and a sign designating the area as for twelve and up. This is not about painting things pink. We want architects, city councils, developers to plan teen spaces that are more creative and more inclusive. While created with girls in mind, the space would be for all teens who feel that the current outdoor spaces don't serve them well. There's one type of masculinity that skate parks and athletic fields cater to, but that misses a whole different type of boy and a whole lot of girls, not to mention our LGBTQIA teens who should also feel like they belong. There's been success in Europe, particularly projects in Barcelona, Vienna and Malmo. For example, Vienna noticed a park was not being used by the girls, so they added hammocks, stages and interesting seating and they saw a huge uptick in usage by the girls in the community. City Council just approved a budget that puts one point eight million dollars toward ballfield renovations, which obviously serves more boys than girls, and four hundred thousand-ish toward the skate park, which again skews ninety-five percent boy. We ask that you please consider this new teen space in your Phase One plans, if not in the lawn bowling area and another area of Rec Park. As a former Division One athlete, I very much love all of the incredible sports opportunities for the kids in this town. But I also think there's too little attention and funding paid to the kids who lie outside the sports culture. El Segundo speaks of inclusivity. It's time to show all of our kids that we mean it and that they are seen, heard and equally considered when it comes to making these important decisions about our vibrant, diverse, fantastic community. I've met with Director Mancini and presented to the Rec and Parks Commission and the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee and have received great support. The Arts and Culture Committee has agreed to contribute money to our cause during their next funding cycle and to earmark the community artist residence stipend for our space. We are asking you to ensure that this teen space is included in Project One F and that funding is allocated for its design and construction. Our group stands by, ready, willing and able to help see it to completion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hollup.
Steve Wood.
Steve Wood, Coach Wood. Steve Wood, alright.
Thank you, honored councilmembers, staff. I run out of speech, but I'm Steve Wood, Coach Woody. Been coaching here for about twenty-four years, over a thousand families. And I can just say it's been an honor and a pleasure serving our youth sports council and our commission and all the great programs that the city has made possible for so many families, both in sports and rec and really helping to change and make our county, our city and our community so inclusive. And it's been an honor and pleasure serving on the DEI committee as well this past couple of years. And I would like to recommend that you reappoint me for another term. I'd like to stay for as long as it takes to make sure that our committee is totally inclusive. Voice for all Hispanic, black, white, Asian conservatives, for women and girls. And I would be glad to consider continuing this, one of the greatest honors I've had of serving my country by being on this committee. It's also has helped me, the sports and this committee has helped me come to grips with why I was probably shot just three months after graduation with a blank into the eyes from right about here and changed my path and it's, I'm, 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 thank God that I'm here. And it's not about me, it's about the people that have helped us start our youth sports lacrosse program here. And it's an honor and a pleasure to also be able to say now publicly or officially, Lacrosse, El Segundo is the home of lacrosse in the west. And there are some things that we can do to help further that. Before I give you that recommendation, I would like to say again, to emphasize, putting our, the best return on investment that we can get in teaching kids, DEI comes from the ground up when they're doing rec programs and doing sports and learning how to be part of a team. Recommendations that I look forward to, Lacrosse looks forward to giving, thank you for Peter Bowen and Peter and Brooks Roscoe and all the great families that have helped us, each segment, each group of families that have helped us grow this game. We're the home of the premier lacrosse league, the professional league now. We're the home of the boys' youth lacrosse program. And the Pacific Edge Girls Lacrosse, seven hundred strong, and we sponsor two intercity teams. We helped to start intercity lacrosse here, not we, the El Segundo Youth Sports Council. That's who I have always been serving, who I serve. It's the city and it's been a great honor. The recommendation that we look forward to making to the chain of command is that- The recommendation that we look forward to making to the chain of command is that we invite some of my hometown neighbor and high school kids, classmates, teammates, Iroquois National Lacrosse Program to declare El Segundo the home of their West Coast Training Center for the night, twenty twenty-eight L.A. Olympics. Right now, they're the founders of the game, and, um, more than, then they're not allowed to play, so they're on a quest for equality. So I'd like to recommend that we put our city on the map for the place to be for the twenty twenty-eight Olympics for rec sports and leading up to it. There's some fantastic things. The Director of the INL International Lacrosse Program likes my ideas, so I look forward to sharing them with the city and helping us not just to grow lacrosse, but all the youth sports that they're gonna come to the West Coast with, hosting teams from Canada, Far East, college, high school, to come to El Segundo to stay and play. So it's an honor and a pleasure serving you all. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Um, Mona Isman, four fif, oh, sorry, I'm short. I get it. Um, Mona, yeah, that's right. Mona Isman, four fifteen Concord Street, um, here on Home Share as a reminder. I was listening to Planning Commission last week, and I know that the trial period on the Home Share, uh, uh, regulation is, needs to be renewed and/or stopped, and there has not been problems. I believe that's largely due to the pandemic, although I hope Home Share can continue to be a good solution for people who are looking for extra income. But I'm here because what I heard at the Planning Commission was a very casual effort and thought that we should just fully expand it to, um, not home sharing, but full Airbnb, all house, owners never present, not managed, and turning our residential neighborhoods once again into a hotel zone. I am the one who's been here a lot. I'm sure my face is PTSD familiar, okay? It's a little to me, too. Yes, we had the problem house that went to court, but there were dozens of problem houses: noise, trash, parking, just rude behavior, and we want to live in a community. I was fortunate to go to the, um, State of the City and hear all about the commercial plans, and that's excellent, and that's wonderful. I didn't get lunch, so I don't know who I talked to there. They ran out of food, okay? No, I'm serious, no food, all right? But, um, I would like-
Me neither, still cranky.
Right, you didn't, okay. We'll go for lunch, Chris, okay? I would like to ask that we keep a community, a neighborhood. We look to develop commercial where there is commercial, but that we really stand at the line of keeping a neighborhood. I want to have neighbors, I want to know the people who live next to me, I want the people who come to our town to care about our town, put their kids in our schools. And what I heard at the Planning Commission was very concerning. They're gonna come to you and say, what's the temperature, to open it up to whole house, to someone not having to be there. Um, when the person is present, the owner is present, people will behave, and the neighbors have someone to come to. When the owner is present, the police have someone to make accountable. Um, all the instances when the owners were not present, the police would say, well, I, we can't really do anything because the owner's not present. Well, that means the owner needs to be present. Also heard comments like, well, what's a little noise at three in the morning? Everyone should just chill. Well, no. We live in a community, we're going to work, we don't want noise Tuesday at three in the morning because someone came to took their holiday in our community, okay? Um, and from a safety and security standpoint, we want the police to take us seriously. We called, they said, don't worry, we told them, they'll calm down, then neighbors would get threatened, and so we wouldn't call the police again. Around the country, around the world, they're looking at not short-term rental, but places longer term, a month, six weeks longer term, because they want people making a commitment. We know people misbehave more when they're away. One of the Planning Commission said, well, everyone want me in their house. Well, maybe not when you're on vacation, okay? But I'm asking the council to really, yes, I hope home sharing works for those with the financial opportunity, but I want to preserve our communities, our neighborhoods. You do not want more houses with, with absentee landlords, absentee managers, you wouldn't want someone to own a business where the owner was never present and the neighbors were stuck sort of dealing with everything that walked in and everything that happened. So I'm gonna ask the council, um, to really resist the temptation to open this wide open beyond the limited home sharing that is currently on the books. And lastly, please, please believe the neighbors. When they said it's not so bad, no, believe us and not them, okay? I'm gonna ask that, because that's really was one of the greater frustrations. And the Planning Commission spoke of giving short timeouts. Well, it's not the owner's fault that the people who rented their house misbehaved. Yes, it is. Okay? Someone misses, misbehaves who comes to use your business and it, and it impinges on your neighbors, it is your responsibility. They wanted only a three-month timeout. Oh, so, oh, it wasn't their fault, it wasn't so bad. Yes, it is.
Time is up.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ansley.
And, um, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. Any others?
Good evening, councilmembers. Samantha Lee, twelve thirty-three East Oak. I will reiterate Samantha Lee, the mom, not Samantha Lee, the second-grade teacher. It's an ongoing confusion here in town, although she did dress up as a wonderful bumblebee yesterday. I'm here today for the second time in thirty-seven years to address the same topic I discussed with you guys last week, that being the brownout of Engine Thirty-two. So, little fun fact about me, I'm a local government nerd, actually worked in it for seventeen years, have a master's degree from USC, and my frustration with your decision last week led me to do some research from handy-dando Google, which has led me to articles, position papers, talking about fire safety deployment in an urban area based on population density and residential density and all sorts of fun factors. You've led me to highlight things that I wanted to share with you here today. A couple of things, and, and El Segundo, as you are well aware, we are five square miles, of which one basically is residential. That would put us into a low hazard occupancy. However, medium hazard occupancies include offices, apartments, mercantile and industrial occupancies not normally requiring extensive fire rescue by firefighting forces, and then the high hazard occupancies, of which we have more than one, include schools, explosive plants, refineries, high-rise buildings, and other high-hazard buildings or large fire potential occupancies. That makes deploying our fire services in El Segundo much different than any of our surrounding communities. To that end, I was really struggling with how, why your decision and your position that this is not a reduction in service, while technically true in the number of sworn personnel you have on staff, that is accurate, you are removing an asset, a very expensive city assets that's now gonna sit there, basically unused, for six months. The economist to me really finds that very unproductive and not an effective use of city assets, but that's a different story. What frustrates me is that I viewed public safety as a function of our capital resources, like our equipment and our apparatus, times the trained personnel we have that gives you an output, and I struggled to find somebody that summarized it like that, and guess what? I did. From the National Fire Protection Association, it says that a fire department's operational performance is a function of three considerations: resource availability and reliability, departmental capability, and overall operational effectiveness. Guess what? Your operational effectiveness is a direct result of the previous two: resource availability and reliability and department capability, which kind of gave me hope that my gut instinct of capital resources times trained human resources gives you your output. If you decrease the variables, i.e. a fire engine, and take it offline for six months, you're gonna decrease the output. There's no other way that I can state that than that. That's the way I feel as a parent, as a voter. Maybe the rest of the voters don't agree with me, they're, they're entitled to their own opinions. I am just very frustrated that what I feel this issue is a reflection of is prioritizing needs versus wants here in our town. I realize it's a six-month prior program, it may not occur, but for those six months, I feel like this is a really short-sighted decision, and there's no other way I can explain it to you than that. You are taking out an apparatus that has a paramedic assessment ability, and you're gonna take it offline, so that when the rescue ambulance from that fire department does a transport and they hang out in the fire, in the emergency room for fifty-one minutes, which was their stated wall time, where they just hang out waiting to be released from the emergency room, there will be no paramedic assessment unit on that side of town, which means you're gonna have to roll from over here on Main Street. Yes, the response time is great, but what happens if they're doing something else? Yes, I know, we have mutual aid. I totally understand that, although from what I've looked up on Manhattan Beach, we're staffed better than they are, so I'm not gonna pin all my hopes on them, no offense. I just, this issue I feel passionately about, because I know your jobs up here are difficult. All these speakers who have come up here tonight have talked about varying degrees of needs and wants and community resources, but I'm telling you that for this voter and for the ninety-two percent who voted to keep our fire department in-house back in ten, in twenty-ten, this is a need, and redoing the plunge for eleven point eight million dollars, including the latest addition of a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a meeting, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a meeting room, that's, that's a want. I did the math on that, assuming seventeen thousand residents, you guys are gonna spend seven hundred dollars per resident to go make the plunge, some fancy dancy new place to swim, when we haven't even figured out how to operate the other one to a break-even position last I looked. So please, I realize your jobs are difficult, thank you for your time, but this voter doesn't agree with that decision.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Yeah, okay, and Mr. George, you want to address any of the public comments we heard?
I just one item, Mayor, the person that spoke on the Home Share Program, uh, actually the Community Development Department has that, will have that on the agenda in your next meeting. So just to inform the council that Home Share Program will be up for discussion at the next meeting.
Mr. George, I think it's with the last speaker up here with, with Ms. Lee, Engine Thirty-two during the brownout, where is that engine going to physically sit? It's gonna sit at the fire station?
It's at the station.
So it's not, we're not sending it anywhere?
No, we're not sending it anywhere, correct.
So if needed, it can, it can start?
Absolutely, and I think that was discussed at the meeting, that if it is needed in the case of an emergency, it, it can be used.
Very well. All right, thank you very much. Okay, now is the time and place for a public hearing. This is related to item twelve, Resolution Approving the Vacation of Hornet Way Street from Imperial Highway to one hundred and eighteenth Street.
Yeah, yeah, I was-
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Well, you asked me about the speakers, Mayor, so yes, I would like to update-
Kind of a continuation of public comments.
Absolutely, thank you, yes, and I do, it's actually, uh, my report here on, on Hyperion is in two parts. The first, I'd like to just, uh, share an update on the actual perimeter roadway improvement project that's been going on and has generated emails and phone calls and so forth from the community. Uh, I wanted to let the council know that overall, uh, the project, the total project is sixty percent completed. Um, the, the issue that's causing, generating the noise and the vibration levels, which is the, the pie, uh, the, the, the pounding of, of piles into the ground, um, out of twenty-one hundred feet of sheet piles, um, a total of fifteen hundred has been completed. So we're looking at almost seventy-five percent of the sheet piles have been installed. And the largest of the sheet piles, which was, uh, constructed through the most heavy equipment, was concluded on, on October twenty-seventh. So right now, they are out there with, with a lighter equipment level, finishing off the, the remainder of the piles, and we're hoping, and what we've, we understand is that the vibration levels and the noise levels should go down significantly. It, it's part of the process of monitoring this with the contractor that Hyperion has, has been using, uh, they actually did two recent independent vibration monitoring reports, and the conclusion was that the, they, they were, the vibration and the noise levels were at an acceptable level. And we also, the city, we engaged our own independent company to go out, and they actually did that, uh, over Monday and yesterday and today, just now, we got the results earlier. And while, and, and the way they monitored the, the situation is kind of at a human annoyance level, and the, uh, the consultant that we used did say that there was intermittent annoyance levels, uh, that did exceed a certain decibel levels and vibration levels for periods of ten seconds at a time. So they were intermittent, um, that, and the rest of the time was acceptable, but the, the intermittent noise levels were continuous over a period of time, so that could be, uh, considered a, a, you know, an infringement upon, you know, hu, uh, human annoyance levels at that, at that time. So we, we just got the results of that report, and we'll make that available on our website as all of this other information we'll make available. And finally, the analysis from, from the consultant did say that, uh, the project that is being undertaken was not expected to cause cosmetic or structural damage to the adjacent residences. So that, that also came in the report that we just recently received, and I'll, again, make that available on the website. Turning to Hyperion itself-
Before you go on from the road-
I'm sorry?
Before you move on from the road-
Yes.
Um, so the assessment that we had done-
Yes.
People have this annoyance level, so there's nothing in their permit that limits their annoyance level, though, is there?
I, I don't believe so.
I mean, because it, it's crazy to think, right? Because there is a airport sound monitor right there at the end of Mariposa, ES one, right?
Mm-hmm.
So the reading today, snapshot from an email today, decimal level ninety-eight, point ninety-eight, nine-eight, right? I mean, that's, that's louder than in the contour than on the runway, right? And so it's, it's just, it's, I guess it's hard to, it's hard to believe that one is acceptable, and two, that there's nothing we can do about it, you know? I mean, I feel like, because we're copied on these emails, I don't know if you guys are copying on all the same emails from Dick Croxel as well, but I feel like Hyperion and, like, we're just gonna keep emailing back and forth until the work's done, and nothing's gonna be done, and those residents, the same residents that are weathering, that we're giving accommodation for, for calling AKMD six times a day, right? Or having to weather this again, and I feel like it's just not helping our cause whatsoever.
So is, were the ninety-eight decibel readings under the, the lighter equipment levels?
Today.
Today, okay?
Today, so if it's intermittent and, and, you know, for no duration longer than ten seconds, that's fine, but at, at ninety-eight?
Yeah.
I mean, it, at some point, it's either they're operating, they're, they're not operating within the limits of their permit, or we need to do something.
Yeah.
You know, I, I mean, you can say, have Hyperion staff meet you out there and listen to it-
Yeah.
And, and feel it, you know? I mean, you saw those videos that were sent to us-
Yep, I did.
People's plates rattling in their house, and, I mean, no one's working in that house, God forbid a baby take a nap, right?
Right.
I mean, it's just, it's, so I don't, I don't know what we can do, but we have to do something, and or we need to figure out how to protect our residents moving forward for any other work that can be done adjacent, not on our property, but adjacent to our property.
Right.
Uh, because I, I mean, it wasn't, that, they didn't need like CEQA approval for that, right? What was the permit that Elias, what, I remember you said it was prior to your time, Ken Berkman's time?
Yeah, that, that was, that was prior to my time, but we looked it up, and on the CECA documents, there were, there were no threshold mentioned.
Now, is that typical?
Uh, really, not that typical. You would expect, uh, the, the documents would have a threshold, but there was none mentioned, and, uh, the email you're just talking about, it just came in about a minute ago, uh, as you were giving awards, uh, to, to Cory and, and, and company, and we will look at that, we will look at that, because, uh, that ninety-five decibels, uh, it's pretty high, so we're gonna be having our, our consulting firm to go there and take a look at it.
What teeth, what teeth do we have in this? I mean, the reality, I mean-
The teeth, the teeth that we have in it, if this is really that excessive, I can work with our, with our Community Development Director, and we try to get Hyperion to utilize even lighter equip- even lighter equipment and be able to seal the area so it contains the noise. So there are ways, we just have to talk to them and convey the message. And we'd be more than happy to do that.
I just, I think we need to get on it because if you say the work is 60% done.
Yeah.
You know, if we keep kicking this can down the road, then it's going to be 100% done. It won't be on our plate anymore and you can move on and work on more productive things, but those residents are going to feel like we didn't care.
Right.
And we didn't step up when they asked us to.
So we, we tried to find lighter equipment that, that they could perhaps work on. Here's the catch though, if they use a lighter equipment.
It's going to take longer.
It's going to take much longer. So, you know, just keep that in mind.
Then maybe staff goes out and meets with the residents and gets Hyperion staff out of their desk and out there to actually hear and feel what it's like. And then we can figure out what works for those residents. Because at the end of the day, I don't think it's a, I know, I'm, I'm not affected. I'm on the east side of town, I don't hear it, right? So I'm not living through it. So I don't know, I, I don't think I'm equipped to make that decision. To say, yes, make it last longer, no, have it be louder for a shorter duration of time. But these residents that are dealing with this, it's, it's just not a healthy way to live.
Yeah.
And trying to move a family with animals into a hotel for a period of time while, you know, there's.
Right.
Annoyance levels are high.
Yeah.
I mean, that, just.
Sure.
Living in a hotel is not fun.
We've been, we've been out there and we'll go back there again. We'll, we'll look at that and we'll make sure that we do whatever we can possibly to mitigate for that.
Yeah, this, the latest email that you received where it's 95 decibel levels, I was, maybe it was wishful thinking, but we hadn't heard from the residents for a period of maybe four or five days. And we hit, we did think that this lighter equipment was the answer, but obviously with this latest decibel reading, we, we, we will follow up on that first thing in the morning, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so turning to Hyperion itself, they are continually, and this is part of a report now that we've requested from them, that they're giving us on a monthly basis and we'll be, again, posting this on our, on our website. But they're cleaning, the cleaning of the influent piping, channels and the bar screen channels has been ongoing to remove settled debris. The cleaning work on the influence sewer line inside Hyperion and within the headworks facility where a lot of the, the odors were coming from began on the week of October 17th and will be ongoing. I know one of the speakers mentioned a, a hype, an upcoming presentation and tour at Hyperion that's set to be on Thursday, November 10th. And please look at our, check our website for more details on that. One of the other items we've been following up on is in the most recent AQMD abatement order that was issued in September, on September 7th. They are to set up a 24-hour hotline number for odor complaints where every complaint will need to be investigated within an hour. So that, that hotline will be set up by November 7th. So I, I think as, as Mizupho said, calling now, unfortunately you have to call AQMD, but also call directly to Hyperion will be, is important to make. And that, that hotline, that hotline, 24-hour hotline will be up on November 7th. And then please remember that when you call AQMD, it takes six odor complaints for AQMD to dispatch an inspector. So that's what's been happening. And unfortunately, we, we actually had a call today, I believe, another notice of violation that came through from AQMD today. And then finally, we, oh, two things. We have been working with a Dr. Michael Stenstrom. I think the council may have heard from him previously. He was the chair of the ad hoc committee that came up with the 33 recommendations in, in the report. We're, we're considering retaining him as a third party, a third independent party to help us on a number of the issues related to Hyperion. He knows the plant inside and out. He's a very learned engineer that understands wastewater treatment plants. He's worked with several of them throughout the country and we really think that he could help us in identifying exactly what needs to be done to control the odors at the facility. And then finally, on the, the USC health study, we did become aware of that today and, or actually late last week. And, and I know Elias met with them today and we'll be bringing back something to the council in terms of the level of, 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 not interest, but, but the level of participation that the city wants to take with that USC health study. But they do have a grant, they're looking to locate an office here in, in the city and will be working with residents to, to, to engage that study and, and survey. So that is, that is my report. Yes.
Two questions, this might be for Mr. Hensley, but how are we doing with Senator Ben Allen's office in shaping legislation and then any updates on legal actions?
I've been waiting for, my understanding, we've been reaching out to try to set up a meeting with them over the last week and it hasn't happened yet. And then on the second part of it, Ben, I will send out something to you this week, the council, about the various experts that are retaining for purposes of the relegation. This is, this is going to be a very expert, technical intensive piece of litigation about what's occurring on site there. So I will get you something confidentially this week.
So it's not that the interest level has dropped with Senator Allen's office? It's just a little bit of phone tag going on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
To your point about Dr. Stenstrom, has he expressed interest? Is he willing to work with us? Where are we at in the process?
Yes, absolutely. We've had two conference calls with him and he's actually drafting up a scope of work right now that'll be presenting to, actually through the city attorney's office before we engage him.
Is Hyperion aware? Is Hyperion aware of that? No?
No.
It might be now, but yeah.
That's fine. I mean, you know, the whole, one of the points was we wanted to engage them to work with us on hiring this outside third party to, to work with them. And we, we did not get any response from them and that, so that's why we're taking the action to just move forward.
And then I'm just curious, through our legal action with the city, are we also looking for them to potentially compensate us for Dr. Stenstrom if they're not paying for it now?
Well, we will seek to get all legal fees and costs associated with, you know, a lawsuit. Yes, I mean, that would be at the very end of it. I mean, the hope would be that if they could co-op, I mean, the big issue here is cooperation and providing information about what they're doing specifically and having third parties look at it and determine, are they doing it in a reasonable fashion? Are they moving quickly? Are they mitigating the, the noise and the odors that are coming now based upon the activities they're undertaking? There are, you know, there are things they have to do there as far as repairing and maintaining facilities. And at times, our understanding is there will be odors when you engage in some of those activities. But are they really doing it in a way that is minimizing those issues? And they're not particularly forthcoming when they're doing any of those things. So one, we don't necessarily know what exactly they're doing. And so two, it's hard to then say, well, are they doing it correctly? And this is where these experts will help us look at all of that information and then go to court and convince judges that if, if they're not doing it reasonably incorrectly, that somebody's overseeing it, which is what essentially happened when they went from their prior plan to the full tertiary treatment some 20 years ago. There was a lawsuit by the city and it was a, a lot of back and forth and oversight by the court. Are they doing things correctly? And it was a long process. They set up a lot of things they're starting to see now with the hotline. They were funding a consulting expert for the city and those kind of things. And so really getting back to that sort of relationship is, I think, where we're headed given the lack of cooperation. But, and I think even in talking to some of the people that I've spoken with as far as the experts, they really don't think the City of LA will do anything without really being pressured to do it. And I think we all believe that too, just from interacting with them.
Thank you.
Just wanted to add, Daryl, I had mentioned this before, there was a number, or there still is a number, 310-640-CITY, to call Hyperion. So the new 800 number and the, the process, it's not a new process. So I don't want the residents to think it's a new process. All the calls to AQMD, AQMD would never tell Hyperion that they were getting called. And if Hyperion got called, they were never telling AQMD that they got called. And so them being now told that they have to investigate it as soon as the call comes in, the calls that we would review, the call log at the Hyperion committee meeting, would be calls to that 310-640-CITY number. And so people would call in, it smells, and Hyperion would send someone out to smell and either say, yeah, no, it doesn't smell anymore, or, oh, here was the problem. And they have to report back and report out to us at that committee meeting, how long it took them to respond and what the issue was. So it's not something new, but maybe the process is just different. But I think it's important that if they, if they discontinue this 310-640-CITY number and go to the 800 number, you know the people I'm talking about, they call this number all the time. So we've just got to maybe send them.
Is that a different number?
Send them a note. Our friends on Dune Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll, we will follow, yeah, because this one here will be an 800 number. So we'll make sure that, that we follow up on that.
Thank you.
All right. And we are, just if you're following along with the agenda, we moved 12 up because we have an applicant here. So getting back to that, we're at a public hearing item. Sure, yeah. Item A, procedural motion, read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Do I have a motion to do so, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 5-0. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, this is time and place here to fix for a public hearing regarding a resolution approving the vacation of Hornet Way Street from Imperial Highway to 118th Street. Mayor Protem Pimentel has a conflict given his employer's proximity to the property. Did I get that right? Yes, he's going to reaccuse himself. City clerk, was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
No, sir.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Mr. George, I'm assuming Mr. Sassoon would like to present?
Yes, absolutely. Our Public Works Director, Elias Sassoon, will give the staff report.
Sure.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This item which is before you is a request from one of the adjacent property owners to the Hornet Way to vacate this roadway from Imperial to 118th Street. All the necessary notifications and signage have been done. There has been no objection from anybody. The area will be preserved with a utility easement and the responsibility of the maintenance of the surface will be diverted to the applicant, which is Hackman Capital. So we have two representatives from Hackman Capital, Mr. Mack Tutilian and Mr. Mike Grayson, and they're here in case there are any, any questions to be asked.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sassoon. Public hearing is now open for public input. Does the applicant wish to speak? Mr. Racine?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, good evening and thank you for the introduction, Mr. Sassoon. And thank you to city staff for really helping us navigate this agenda item. In full disclosure, we have never vacated a street before, so we're unfamiliar with the process. They were incredibly helpful and it has been a long process. So this is the culmination of six years of effort. It started with a casual conversation between former city manager Greg Carpenter and Michael Hackman. As we were acquiring the property in late 2016, Greg had suggested to Michael, perhaps we would like the street vacated. It bisects our property. We own both sides of the, the street and we actually own the street as well. And he said, that way we could section it off and make it our own campus, a fully integrated campus, and the city would no longer have to maintain the street. That would become our responsibility. We said, that sounds great. How do we do that? So flash forward six years, letters of support, support from the neighbors, two easements negotiated with Metro and LA Times to make sure that they were taken care of as well as ensuring the city had full access and, and, you know, the easement utility as well. And here we are. So I don't have more than that. So with that, thank you for your time and your consideration. I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Racine. Do you have any questions for Mr. Racine? No. Thank you. Thank you for everything you've done with that property too. Okay, let's see, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0. Okay, council discussion.
I've driven down that road. I don't know about you guys. Growing up in Del Air, you, if the train was coming, heading, heading southbound, you can hop onto Hornet Way and get to the next stop line and beat the, the train stops. Fun fact for you. Question, actually, I do have a question. What are we going to do to the street signs? And is this street going to no longer exist?
The section that they'll be vacating, it'll be fenced and the signs will come out. However, not entire roadway will be vacated. So the signage for the length of Hornet Way to the south will remain as, the roadway will still remain as a public right of way. So for the section that is being vacant, the signage will be removed. In fact, the applicant intends, and it is on the staff report, they intend to fence the area and enhance the aesthetically, the area to a more pleasing neighborhood and with providing copies of keys to the police fire department and the city for utility access. So that's what we intend to do.
Can we get those signs donated to the automotive museum by chance when they get taken out?
And I think if there is something that belongs to public, it has to go through a certain procedure before we do anything.
Can you get that procedure on a future agenda, Mr. George?
We, we will take care of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, just to be nostalgic, I remember when the roads through Surf Ridge were still open. That was a great shortcut and fun joyride. All right, do we have any other council discussion? No? All right, city attorney will read the resolution by title only.
Mayor and council, a resolution ordering the vacation of Hornet Way pursuant to Streets and Highway Code Section 8300 at SEC and reserving certain utility easements is ready for adoption.
Do we have a motion to approve?
First.
So moved?
Okay. Nicole with the first?
First and second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
4-0. Thank you. Are we going to go back to consent? We'll wait for Mayor Protem for a sec. Okay, we're back to consent. Do we have any polls for item six through 11? No, do we have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Great, that was the first from Drew.
Second.
Second, first up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0. Thank you. Okay, staff presentations, item 13, Phase One Improvements of Recreation Park. Mr. George?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This item, we're actually very excited, staffs are very excited to present this item this evening. If you recall, recently, there was a joint meeting between the council and the Parks and Rec Commission whereby we discussed a number of different options regarding the park, park needs assessment. And what came out of that was direction to move forward on a discussion of a Phase One improvements to Recreation Park. So we will be sharing that concept tonight with you and primarily the, the, the discussion will, will focus on, on really hopefully getting some direction on priorities as well as direction on project funding options too, because there's a number of dollars associated with each of the phases that'll, that'll be before you this evening. So I'll turn it over to our Parks and Rec Director, Ally Mancini, for the staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Well, Daryl already gave you a preview of some of my presentations, so I apologize if I repeat him. But I am very pleased to be before you this evening to continue our discussion on the future of Recreation Park. And as Daryl mentioned, on August 31st, at the joint meeting of the city council and the Rec and Parks Commission, the council directed staff to return with a high-level overview of five projects identified in a Phase One of Rec Park improvements. The discussion, however, began several years ago when the council started considering potential updates to the teen center. And at that time, the council decided to take a pause and take a more holistic approach at potential improvements for the park. And soon after, the Council directed staff to conduct a needs assessment of the community's priorities for the entire park versus just the teen center. A consultant was hired and a draft document, I'm sorry, a consultant was hired and a draft document was created that discussed many needed updates to several of the park facilities. The Council asked staff to further refine the assessment and present options for the Council and Rec and Parks Commission to consider at a joint meeting. At that meeting, the groups unanimously decided to focus on keeping the general layout of the park, but making critical infrastructure improvements to carry the park into the future. Tonight, staff are asking Council to assist with three specific tasks. One, to review the first five projects identified in the phase one Rec Park Improvement Plan. Two, to prioritize the projects to help staff determine a timeline for project completion. And three, to identify an approximate budget and subsequent funding sources to ensure the components of the improvements are designed within the current financial means of the city. Identifying a realistic budget and solid funding sources will allow the projects to move forward in a timely manner. Once staff receive input on these priorities and funding, we will begin the process of engaging with consultants to produce site plans and concepts, which would then be shared with the Recreation and Park Commission and the City Council respectively. This line, this slide outlines the five projects that were identified for phase one. They include Project One A, the renovation of the teen plaza. Project One C, the renovation of the sports courts. Project One D, field renovations and updated lighting. Project One E, replacement of the irrigation in Rec Park. And Project One F, the demolition of the lawn bowling court with potential addition of sports courts, picnic plaza, teen space, whatever we envision at that time. So Project One A includes the renovation of what I call the teen plaza, which includes the teen center, the basketball court, and the skate park. Potential changes could include the elimination of the basketball court to expand the size of the skate park and perhaps add an outdoor seating area or event space for teens. So on these next few slides, you will see some pictures of the current plaza. Here you see pictures of the interior of the teen center. And I know several of the council are familiar with this, but I wanted to share this so the public also has an idea and can reference that. And this slide here shows the exterior spaces, the basketball, and then there's a photo there of the park or the skate park. The next two projects, One C, the renovation of the sports courts, and One F, demolition of the lawn bowling area, are depicted together on this site map above. And again, these are just some current photos to highlight the current conditions. This photo here shows the tennis courts and some of the seating areas we have. And this photo here shows the very poor condition of our racquetball courts. Also shows a photo of one of the courts that we use multi-use, so we use it for pickleball and also for tennis. And then, of course, there on the end is the volleyball court. Here you see the shuffleboard and cornhole. Next, we have Project One D, which is the field renovations, including proposed updated lighting. Again, here are some photos of the current field conditions. There you can see there's extensive damage to the brick dust and problems, obviously, with the turf and related irrigation concerns. And finally, we have then Project One E, the renovation or the, actually, the replacement of the park irrigation system. The estimated costs, and again, I want to emphasize estimated costs, for the five projects are shown in the table here totaling anywhere between five million and eight million dollars, because these are very rough estimates. It is possible that numbers could change as we begin to kind of hone down and focus on specific design plans and what we really want to see in those spaces. I've also included on this slide some potential funding sources. There are several periods, several years within the next few years where the Council has already looked at putting a million dollars in reserves for park, Rec Park improvements specifically. We also have seven hundred and fifty thousand approximately in carryover funds for the teen center allocation. And then we also anticipate having a balance of a little over five hundred thousand dollars in Measure A funds, which we would need to expend by twenty twenty-four. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Council might have to help prioritize these projects and identify potential funding to move ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Mancini.
Sure.
Questions?
Yeah, so, thank you very much. This is obviously a long time coming, and we have been working really hard on this. So the way I looked at it, we have two objectives, we have to get to you tonight, right? And then it's basically set a list of priorities and then set a budget that we want to design into, rather than just spending and then figuring out what it costs.
Correct.
Or designing through their costs, okay? So there's a few things like, that I believe that we can kind of work on concurrently, because I believe that all of these are pretty much, they're needed. They're all a priority. But, for example, One E, to me, is the central, central part of everything that has to be done for the fields, as Elias pointed out as well. If we don't fix the irrigation piece, none of this matters. So to me, that is pretty much the first thing that has to be done before you can even entertain what you're going to do with One D. All right? At the same time, I think One A and One F, we've been looking at that for a long time, but I do believe they're going to require a little bit more design and timeframe. I believe One E should be a lot shorter timeframe to at least figure out what we need to do. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Now, I also know you've got a lot of field usage out there, so there's going to have to be a timeframe that we do that. You can't just all of a sudden blow up the high school season or little league season, the girls' softball season, whatever, we've got to figure that piece out. But to me, that's going to be very important to get done. And then I think One A and One F, again, they're, they're really important. I think we talked about how we reimagine, how we add more pickleball courts. That was a big thing that came up at the Park and Rec Commission meeting. The teen space thing that came out today, I, we, we have a teen plaza in One A that we're, we're looking at.
That's right.
So I, a teen plaza in One A and a teen space in One F, I, we, we have to make sure that we're serving the community in the best way possible, affecting the most amount of people. So I, that's how I look at that. I look at One C as probably the last part of that priority, only because, not that they don't need to be done, it's just that those are being utilized right now and can continue to be utilized while the rest of them get taken care of. So that's how I look at that, as far as I'm looking at what your budget looks like. My quick math is about eight million dollars is what you're looking at, is kind of on the maximum on that. Here's my, my issue with this. This needs to include the design fees. We can't be sitting there and saying it costs eight million dollars and we bust two million dollars in design fees and now we're, we're at ten. So in my opinion, whatever we're doing here has to include the design fees, and it all has to be worked in together. But overall, I think, great job. I know there's still a lot more work to do, but I really believe we need to figure out a way to fund this. Thanks.
And, and if I can just respond to one of your comments, we also will need to consider that there may be some consultant costs, even in just producing, you know, a little bit of a site plan. It just depends on how detailed we want to get right out of the gate. You know, there's that, that is something we will need to consider.
I just don't want a twenty-five percent kicker in on top of the eight million.
I hear you.
That's historically what's happened, and that's problematic.
I agree with that.
Okay.
So that's actually on the lines where I was going to talk about. So one of the things I want to make sure is that we bring in or bring, like, do we have the, the expertise in-house to manage these projects? I know one of the problems we had with the plunge design is that it may not have been moved along as fast as it could because it was being handled by people that had never done something like that before.
Right, understand.
And I just want to make sure we don't repeat our mistakes and that we hire a, like, a project manager who is on task. I mean, I look at what's happening at the school district. They have the gym that's ahead of schedule and below budget because they have a very strong project manager who is constantly on it and watching it. And I believe some of the times we have missteps because we don't have that project manager. And if we're going to put money into this, I think if, you know, I agree with Mr. Drew that, you know, we should really move forward. The One E is something we could plug and play a lot quicker, and that One A is going to take a long, a bit of time because you're going to have to design. But we can't spend so much time, we've been talking about that teen center for, since I've been on council, which is six years. And if we have to go another year to come up with the design, I think I'm going to blow. Like, I, I, you know, we've had so many discussions about it. We've had two, for two years running, we've had the high school kids come and pitch on it. At some point, we just need to move forward.
Agreed.
And get a core group of people together to really decide and move forward. Because I, I, you know, we seem to have analysis paralysis, and we got to stop.
I agree with that, thank you.
So that would be my recommendation on that. And then, you know, I actually like your, print attorney thought the One C can just hold, hold status until, house status quo until we can get One D, and One D can wait until after. So One C and One D can wait. And as far as the lawn bowling, lawn bowling area and the component for the teens, I do also agree that the teen center could be a great plaza for the teens. But instead of using lawn bowling, bowling for teens, I also think we have that area by the clubhouse, that patio area that's the open air patio. That would be a great place to put some outdoor, pardon?
The skating circle.
The skate circle, which no one uses. So maybe we put outdoor seating there and make it inviting for kids or adult, young adults to go hang out there. That, that's an area that's underutilized and has been underutilized for many years. So that's an area that we could really focus, would be opposite ends of the park. But we definitely need the additional pickleball. So I would hate to take away the pickleball, add expanded courts when we have another area that we can satisfy that need.
Sure.
So, but my, my biggest challenge going to be to you is how do we move this forward quickly? And do we have the expertise on, on staff to manage it so that we can have some progress?
I have similar comments to my fellow colleagues here. I will say that I would love for you guys to have a roundtable with the powers that be, you know, your staff, Elias's staff, Michael Allen's staff, and saying, okay, you know, what can we tackle and what kind of timely manner, right? Your staff's going to tell you, well, we're not going to actually be able to touch Brett Field's irrigation until, like, you know, August, maybe, right? Because AYSO is going to run through, maybe we can get it done in January before baseball starts in February, but God forbid it doesn't, there's no field for them to go to.
Right.
Right? And so looking at that and game planning that, I think having a schedule that you can come back to and say, hey, here's a two-year plan on how all of the irrigation is going to be updated over the course of two years, based upon field rotation, field use, scheduling, so on and so forth. You know, maybe we move kickball off of girls' softball for a period of time to get that done, right? Not a bad idea. I will say, though, you know, the renovation of the current courts, if there's anything that is a trip hazard, you know, I would say, we need to get that fixed. We need to get it fixed in more of a timely manner because we are just rolling the dice right now, leaving ourselves open to trip and fall litigation. One F, the demolition of lawn bowling and the addition of the sport court. In that roundtable, I'd love for you guys to talk and figure out, like, okay, well, what can be done? Right? Because that may be one of the largest, like, impacts when it's done to our community. And it may take the most amount of time or it may take the least amount of time because it's going to be met with the least amount of resistance. Because there's no user group that is booked on it, that we have a contract on, that we have an obligation for some annual schedule on, that sort of thing. So I would say just put your heads together, you're the professionals, you know how that space is used and scheduled, and then come back with a cohesive plan that, and a budget that can be met. Right? I think that's what it comes down to, is this is what it's going to cost, this is how it's going to get done. Funding source, I don't see Topgolf money on there.
Oh. I'd have to defer to my colleague.
Did we not create a policy that sends money from the annual?
We created a policy, not, but it's, it's a more, a want, like, we didn't.
Well, no, part of their, part of our agreement with Topgolf is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, is it not?
Right, and so we have a million dollars per year programmed into the park reserve, which includes the Topgolf money.
Okay, so that's just, it's up there in the Rec Park Reserve, Reserve for Rec Park Improvement. Okay.
Yeah, and we have that programmed out for the next five years each year.
Okay, perfect. So it's just, it's built into one of those numbers?
Correct, sir.
Thank you. But yeah, that's my thought. My thought is I would love to empower our staff to come back to us with a plan, say, this is how we're going to get this done. Because then at that point, you guys can decide, okay, well, on that budgetary item, maybe we don't change the lighting. Like, what's the cost savings on that? What's the break even on changing the lighting to, is it going to save us money? Is it going to be more efficient? And ultimately, okay, is that like the fire engine that we replace when it's not broken? You know, can those lights last another ten years and then we do it then, kind of thing? You can make that decision then. That's my two cents.
And then, real quick, on the lawn bowling, when you guys start to look at, you know, options for added pickleball or tennis court, I mean, we also have the, the horseshoe and the, right. I mean, I want to make sure that encompasses that whole area.
It does, yes, it does.
Because I just want to make sure people aren't thinking it's just that one component.
Right.
It's all three of those, that whole area.
Right, okay. So just so I can ask for just clarification on Councilmember Nickel and a little bit of Councilmember Persk. So you'd like the staff to come back with some recommendations on what we feel as the subject matter experts would best make sense in those specific areas and come back?
I think from a timing standpoint, you know?
Okay.
You guys have those schedules in front of you, you know what it's going to take, you know how long it would be, start to finish for a design on this or design on that, and.
And some of them are straightforward, like the field renovations, but like the teen center, it really depends on, are you really wanting to keep the skate park the way it is? Are we wanting to, you know, increase that size? I mean, those are some of the questions. It's hard to get, you know, a site plan when you don't, when, you know, unless staff's just going to make those decisions, which we could certainly do, but I wanted to see what input the Council might have on some of those.
Like I said, we've, we've met, there's been so much dialogue about that. I think, I, I, if you're coming to asking us if we're, start again at the beginning, I, I'm, it's frustrating because we have had so many groups come and present different ideas and concepts, and we've all weighed in that we wanted to move forward. I just, I just, I hope we're not starting at square one again at this point. So I just want to make sure.
Let's hear from Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, I was going to probably jump a little bit in the same pool there as, as Councilmember Pierce stuck, where I think broadly, A and F are where these things land as the priority of work. But with those, you know, I think that the, the purpose of having schematics up here is, you know, we kind of know what we'd like to see in the teen center itself because I think we looked at a plan for that last year, and we had some that we kind of liked, and I think it came in at eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or something. And that's at the height of pandemic money, but pre-inflation. But I think insofar as, do we then have a half-court basketball court and expanded skate park and those things? The next time you come up here, be like, and this is what we think it's going to look like? And then we either say yes or no, or, you know, we want that thing to be shaped like a panda or a clown or a windmill or whatever. And then for the One F spaces, similarly, like, we don't know, like, I, I don't know what the, how often racquetball is used. You know, nineteen eighty-six, probably a lot of users, maybe there's holdovers, you know, maybe my dad's down there. But those are the kinds of things that if you're going to engineer them out, you know, let us know so we can yea or nay it and show us what it looks like on the schematic up there. Because, you know, maybe if paddle tennis, I, I don't know how it's used. Every time I'm down there, I feel like there's someone yelling and playing. So I think that's probably there. I, I don't know if we can move volleyball somewhere else, if that makes sense. But, you know, give us something to say yes or no to on A and F. I mean, I think from here, you're probably going to leave with priority of work on those two.
Right.
And then, you know, irrigation as seasons allow. You know, then the other ones are probably a little lower on the totem pole. But that being said, too, there's a reciprocal relationship where, when you come up and, and next time, and like, here's what our order of work is, we can also help go look for money. You know, there is, there is something, there are things that we get invited to and go speak at and go to elected sort of stuff, where, whether it's Measure A funding or, or other things of that ilk, we can say, hey, look, there's, there's a grant program that exists for that. Or if we are going to take somebody that used to be a stamping plant and dig out of the soil and convert it to a pickleball court, there can be some sort of rehabilitation fund for those things. So it allows us to also allocate funds, not just ours but other people's.
I have a suggestion. To me, it comes down to four criteria. Functionality, and when I look at those, the one that is not functional outside of Councilmember Nickel's point about potentially some trip hazards is the teens, the skate park. It hasn't been, it was never designed to be functional, it's never been functional. And I look at utilization.
Yes.
So that teens, that skate park, users per square foot is probably the densest used in all of Rec Park. I also look at cost, what's cost, and timeline, to your point. So I think if you come back to evaluating each one of the, each one of these against those four factors, it'd be pretty clear to us which ones to prioritize. I think if we say. I think if we say we're gonna do the fields while they need to be done, councilman Drew, I agree. I agree logistically, that's gonna be challenging. And there's gotta be a very specific timeline associated with that that's gonna be done over time to accommodate all the different sports uses. To me, the skate park is a no-brainer. It doesn't work now. We've already acknowledged that there's a problem. We've already heard from our community several times over the last six years, it's a problem, even predating us being on council. And we've allocated funds for the skate park. So we, we've already agreed, as I said, in our strategic planning, the skate park and teen center need to be prioritized. So I think it's those four criteria. So it's utilization of the asset, functionality, cost, timeline. Then I think about, uh, was it Ms. Halup, Mrs. Halup's standpoint? I just wonder the teen center, if we're going to do the teen center, which by the way is not well utilized. I remember my 34 and 33-year-old son, they would go there every Friday because Sean Green, who used to work for the city, put on incredible concerts in that venue. He happened to have a record label. No, not Sean Green, your old boss.
Neil Wallace.
Neil Wallace. Excuse me. Neil Wallace. That's right. Wendy's. It was vibrant then. So I don't know what it's gonna take to make it vibrant. Maybe it's beyond that. I would hate to spend $800,000 on a facility if it's not gonna become vibrant and if people like the pre-teens and the teen girls aren't gonna use it. So the question I wanted to ask her that occurred to me later, and she's not here anymore, Ms. Alup is, do those studies suggest that indoor facilities work too for pre-teens and teen girls? And I don't have the answer to that. Maybe you do.
I would suggest though that it may be in our interest for the age group she was talking about that, that, you know, 10, 11, 12, 13 are, are not in the same location as 14, 15, 16.
Good point.
The same way that we, you know, we keep eight-year-olds off the majors, little league team, no matter how good they are.
So I would love to see these prioritized based on those four things. Again, it's just, it's, to me, it's do they work currently or not? What's the cost to fix it? What's the timeline logistically? And what's utilization of that asset? And I think that will lead us to the right priorities.
So just to clarify, um, you know, when we, we, we can do all those things. I think those are all great ideas. What I don't wanna see happen is, is what happened with the plunge is that we go out and get a plan and then it's way above, you know, kinda the council's idea of, of costs. I'm just wondering if there's any direction.
Can I make another suggestion?
Yes, please.
We have at least one seat being replaced. So we're gonna have a new perspective of everything. We're gonna miss you.
We will.
And there's a lot here that we don't even have the money for. Let's just pick one and start with it.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion. Pick the one that we already know is broken, that doesn't work well, that's highly utilized, that we've already allocated money for, and let's get after it.
Well, the other, the other thing too is, and I don't know if you've ever lived through a remodel, but you talk to the architect, you say, I want this, 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 and this. And they bring you back a plan and then you go out to bed. You're like, well, I don't have that much money.
Right.
So you go back to the architect and you say, well,
Right.
I only have enough money to build, you know, thousands of square feet addition. Can we work on that? And so I would say if we go out for design, you say, the maximum amount of money we have to spend on this item is X.
Gotcha.
Period.
Right.
Come back to me with what you can build for X.
Love it.
Done. Right? Then you, then you're not dangling a carrot in front of a council's, you know, face. It's like, I wanna bite that carrot, but I don't have the means by which to bite that carrot cause four other things just came up that are gonna take the money away.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, there, there is some low hanging fruit here.
That helps.
Things we can get done.
Yeah, that helps. And we can, we can do that.
To the mayor's point, I would follow up with Ms. Halup, uh, you know, thinking about the skating circle, cause that was, I was thinking the exact same thing when she was talking. Uh, cause when we were in high school, I remember the girls used to always hang out, or middle school, the girls used to hang out at the, uh, the playground by the clubhouse, cause there was like, there was a merry-go-round. You know? And they would always sit on that. They'd always be hanging on that because we would chase them and that's where they would go. But. Uh, up there on top of the hill, the skating circle is, it's utilized but not heavily utilized. There is a stage there that's already built. That was one of the items that she said was implemented in Barcelona that kinda brought them together. So that could be one of those things where you guys look into it and it's like, wow, okay, wow, there is this study. Look, there is this types of seating or benches. Like come back to council and say, hey, guys, can I have $40,000 to go out and buy X, Y, and Z?
Okay.
And we can see if we activate this space, this may solve this, this need immediately.
Right.
And it'd be a $40,000 thing. Right? Cause the space is a space. We just need to make it fun and activate it. And with regards to the teen center, whatever you guys end up doing, however you end up doing it, understand that it has absolutely nothing to do with what the inside looks like. It's what, how it's activated. I've played hockey inside there. I've been to concerts inside there, right? We played, we had ping pong tournaments. Like we played wolfel ball inside there, right? It was whatever it needed to be. Like the teen center morphed and, and it was fun and it was whatever the kids were into at the time attracted them. And so I think it, that may, may be more of a programming piece, right? Instead of it's here's funds for, you know, drywall and paint and nails and switch it to like, hey, here's some money for programming. Bring some people in, do something fun, right? I mean, when the fire department used to get rid of their recliners, they donated them to the teen center. And we'd ride over there in a truck, the city truck, right, with Neil, and we'd load them in the back of the truck and we'd take them to the teen center. And it was the greatest thing ever. We had new recliners.
We were grateful youth.
And, and, and the joke was, was that those recliners were likely donated to the fire department before the fire department donated them to the teen center. But I can tell you, when we got those recliners, that was like Christmas. And so teens don't have expensive taste per se. You know, we just need to activate the space and have some fun with it.
Okay. I think I'm pretty clear on that.
Yeah, I just wanna echo what councilman Nichols said. I would, again, I hate to spend three quarters of a million dollars renovating a teen center and it gets no use. I think he's spot on that the programming is key. And, um, that asset lost, has lost its luster over time. I'm not sure why. I, I don't think it's just because it's tired.
But it's very tired. I mean.
It is tired, but.
It's probably a mix.
I don't know that my 16-year-old would go in that facility unless there was a reason to go in that facility cause all of his buddies are gonna be there and there's programming to draw him there. He's not gonna just go there cause it's an inviting experience with a couple of stand-up video games. You gotta get the girls there too. Exactly.
They're not gonna go.
He said that.
If it's dirt.
Prob- probably a mixture of both, programming and some revitalization to the space would, would be a good combo.
Do you, would you like us to take a vote on how we're gonna prioritize here? Or do you think you have enough to work with?
I actually think we've got a lot of good feedback and appreciated. And we'll go back and we've been taking good notes. And I think we know, I think I have a good sense of what you're looking for.
But please go back to a couple of years ago.
Yes.
When we had the, um, the high school come and do presentations, we had, that the whole focus was on the teen center.
Okay.
And then activation of the teen center. And you, it was from the youth. And we voted on it. You can watch the council meeting.
A civic day? Was it a civic day?
It was a civic day. And they had a lot of great ideas, concepts, 2019.
Sure.
Please watch that because it will tell you, I mean, that's from their voices and that's who's gonna use it. So let's, let's listen to those voices.
Okay. Sounds good.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
And definitely get a project manager on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mancini. Okay, item 14, fire department automatic and mutual aid report. Uh, Mr. George, who will report on that?
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, mayor. Our fire chief will present that report.
Good evening, mayor. Member city council, Fire Chief Deanna Lee. Uh, tonight, I'm just gonna speak briefly, a little education piece on how mutual aid works in the fire service in California. So just a quick, um, I gave you more detailed history in your packet, but a quick background, that the first California Fire Service and Rescue Emergency Mutual Aid Plan was prepared and adopted way back in 1950 as an annex of the California State Civil Defense and Disaster Relief Plan. I included here the California Labor Code and the government code as well. Uh, the concept of mutual aid is based on a common understanding that every individual community cannot gear up for every possible emergency. So the best way for communities to make sure help is available when they need it is to be able to give help to others when they need it. All 58 counties and nearly all local governments within the state are signatories to this master mutual aid agreement. Um, El Segundo participates in mutual aid locally, within Area G, within Region 1, and statewide. Um, firstly, I'll go over locally, um, our mutual aid given and received. And I have a few years here as a sample. Uh, we participate in automatic and mutual aid. So just a quick definition, that automatic aid, as the name implies, is it's dispatched automatically. So it's already pre-planned when someone calls 911. For example, Dockweiler Beach, someone calls for help. LAFD and ESFD are, are dispatched at the same time. And, um, it's so that whoever gets there first, we're trying to get there within four to six minutes. And, um, it, it makes so that we, we make sure that someone's there. Um, it's a little more difficult for, um, LAFD to get out of the airport at times or it's, it's to ensure that there's always help there at Dockweiler Beach. Another example of, uh, automatic aid is the area plan that we have for a structural fire, a major incident response. So if you called 911 and said, my house is on fire, you would get an automatic plan that dispatches, um, the appropriate units for a structural fire in El Segundo. Uh, mutual aid is more of a request. So, um, something unexpected where you call dispatch and you would ask for what you need. For example, um, when we had the bus crash a few months ago with the 19 patients, um, we called for, uh, resources. We had resources from LAFD, from Manhattan Beach, from Redondo Beach, from LA County. Uh, we called in all those resources because it overwhelmed El Segundo at that moment with 19 patients. Also, um, a good, um, something that we have the benefit of is our neighbors, LAFD, they have a lot of specialized equipment that we could request, um, such as like a helicopter. They have, um, an air cushion over here at 95s if someone was jumping out of a, a building. They have a bariatric ambulance for patients over 500 pounds and multiple, multiple things that, um, we request through the battalion chief or the assistant chief and, and they'll, they'll send it over. On the slide here, we have, this would be total calls for 2019. So total incidents for El Segundo Fire Department was, um, 2,811. Um, we, we gave mutual aid 36 times. That's total to LA County, Manhattan Beach, all neighboring agencies. We received mutual aid, uh, 15 times. So that the percentage of mutual aid given and received for 2019 was only 1.9%. So that's what kinda put in perspective that, you know, with the amount of mutual aid we do is a small percentage of our total calls for the year. Uh, in 2020, we had 2,426 calls. And, uh, we, we gave mutual aid, uh, 41 times and we received it 29 times for a percentage of 2.9% for total calls. 2021, uh, 2,699 calls that year. We gave mutual aid 22 times and we received 22 times. So, uh, the percentage was 1.7%. Now, in your packet, I gave you, uh, everything so you can look through every single call that we did for mutual aid given and received. And I didn't include, um, that's what I put down here at the bottom. I didn't include, um, when we were dispatched and canceled en route. So a lot of times they'll say, you know, they'll tone us out to go. And by the time we get to the rig or within a, you know, a minute, they say, cancel, we've got it, you know? So I didn't include those because it wasn't really, we weren't actually committed to the incident. So on both ways, that kinda happens.
Chief, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Uh, when I was looking at this earlier, just how do you describe, or how would you explain from 2019, 2020? It looked somewhat overweight in the sense that we were given, you know, two to three times as many calls on average than we were receiving. And then in 2021, it flattened out. Did something change or?
So, um, I, I don't, I would be speculating, um, when I talk, I have a consultant that helps me with the data. And 2020 has, has been a strange year. I mean, well, because of the pandemic, so the numbers were off. I would, I would just be guessing why we gave more, something to do with the, with COVID or at that time, or the lack of ambulance is able to respond, or I'm not sure. But like I said, they're all listed what we did, you know, in that time. Or there were more fires cause people were at home, you know? It's probably a combination of, of everything.
Okay, thank you.
One clarifying question. So I know it says that, uh, these numbers don't include the dispatch canceled en route.
Mm-hmm.
Do you ever, you know, from just a response standpoint, cause we've been asked many times, the response standpoint, like how long does it take, you know, for the bus to get from fire station two to a house or from fire station one to a house? But if, you know, we're responding to a call in Manhattan Beach, are we being canceled when we're out in front of the plaza? Are we being canceled when we're already in the tree section? You know, cause there's a difference in time it's gonna take for that rig to get back into town to respond to another call if they're in the tree section or if they're in East Manhattan Beach or if they're all the way down like Second Street, Manhattan Beach versus the call is canceled when they were right out in front of the lakes and they made a U-turn and came back.
Yeah, it's gonna vary. It's, um, you could look at the times, the response times, but there's, um, we're on the rig and out the door within two minutes. So sometimes it's then.
No, meaning like when it was, oh, so you're saying like it was canceled right when you're out the door?
Yeah, like someone calls 911 and says, you know, my house is on fire in Manhattan Beach. Okay? They do the automatic. Everybody's rolling. Okay? And then they have more intel or they said PD's on scene, it's a barbecue. And then they're like, okay, we're putting our turnouts on. And they're like, forget it. So then we're like, okay, you know, but the, the ones, the information I gave you was like, we actually made it there. There was actually something wrong and we helped out.
Now, like when we, sorry, just a point of clarification. So let's say we're not on site. Let's say one of our rigs is like, is in Manhattan Beach somewhere, right? Helping out and it's like, okay, you're not needed anymore. You can go back. And then we get a call that comes out. Does our response time, cause we have to track our response time and then report our response time, right? So is our response time actually measured by how long it took us to get from Manhattan Beach to then that other, to that call?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, sometimes, uh, all the, you know, there's so many different occasions.
We see a 15-minute.
If they were over there in Manhattan Beach, then we will make sure that we would have someone in town to respond. So they would say, cancel engine 32, send engine 31. You know, we do our due diligence to make sure, you know, or make sure that the city's covered if we did happen to be in Manhattan Beach. If you're saying if we're there and then we get a call and, um, our policy is to, if we need to put turnouts on, we pull over, put the turnouts on, we go en route. And then we, you know, if we're within five minutes back to town.
Yeah, I was just thinking how, you know, cause stats, stats suck. And so, you know, a couple of response times that are way outside of our average could skew that stat at the end of the year.
Yeah, in fact, the consultant that I have, he calls as outliers and so.
And he kicks them out?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is more like accurate of what we're doing daily. Okay. Um, so next, I know there's been a lot of discussion about the aid given and received to Manhattan Beach. So, um, that first slide was regarding total mutually. This is specifically, um, aid given, this is, so the, the total here is the total aid given and received by Manhattan Beach and El Segundo Fire Department. So we, in 2019, we helped Manhattan Beach 17 times. They helped us 15. 2020, we helped 70 times, or no, sorry, I beg your pardon, 20 times. And we received, uh, help 13 times. And then in 2021, we helped 20 times and they came over here 10 times. So, um, again, not a big percentage of calls out of the 2,500, you know, more or less calls that we're running. Um, any questions on Manhattan Beach?
Actually, I have a question on Manhattan Beach, but did, um, do you have anything kinda year-to-date 2022? Or is that still kind of in the process? Is it trending? I guess my question is maybe more general. Is it trending in the same direction as 2021? Any blips in the matrix?
I will get that to you tonight. We're at 2,500 calls already this year.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So, um, but I will, I'll get that to you tonight. That's, I can run that report.
All right. Thank you.
And at what, what time, at what timeframe did Manhattan Beach go down to nine for?
As far as I know.
And well, now they're at seven, but they went to nine. What year did they go down to nine?
That's the number they've been at since I've been here for 20 years. So I can get back to you on that as well.
For just a point of clarification, when you say 2021, that's January 1, December 31st.
Yeah, calendar, calendar year.
In line with our fiscal year, right? It's calendar year. Okay.
And I'll be giving you, um, an annual report, um, you know, as we reach the end of the year. So you'll have a, a big view of everything we've done.
Before we go off the, uh, mutual aid calls, can, can you discuss, uh, maybe for probably all of our benefit and certainly for the people at home, the criteria on automatic aid? What, what are the magic words? When does automatic aid become automatic?
So we have these signed agreements, um, that I included in your packet as well. So it's an agreement between us and LAFD, for example. Also, we have agreements with the rest of the Area G city. So, um, the fire chiefs and, and you all sign when we, when we. So the fire chiefs and you all sign when we, when we create these agreements that you are in agreement with these. And we agree to a plan where we can help each other automatically.
And are all the automatic aid agreements, can you discuss how those overlap with the mutual aid agreements?
So I think, do you want me to go specifically into?
I think it's just so, these, you know, the fire service is such a nuanced, it's its own language. So I guess I'm watching, the people are, are, are paying very close attention to this right now because of our program. So I think it might be beneficial just to discuss it so that the thousands of residents watching with bated breath.
So automatically, if something happens in the tunnel here at LAX, we're, we're, they're going to call for us. And so then LAFD is going to be on the other side. And so that we have units with bordering, with neighboring agencies on scene, whoever gets there the fastest or to aid each other. And there's different rules with EMS versus structured fire response. So that, you know, if we took control of a patient, we can't just abandon the patient. You know, there's a whole bunch of rules that go with that. But those are already pre-planned so that we don't have to, when someone calls it in, our dispatch center already knows who we're sending, so.
So conceivably, if we're providing automatic aid, would that be duplicative to our stats on mutual aid? Or do we score this? I know we score those differently on Excel spreadsheet. But if we are, if we're called to a neighboring city by automatic aid, is that number also being captured in the number of times we're providing mutual aid?
Yeah, because the automatic aid is really mutual aid, but just so that it's all mutual aid. That's, yeah, it's a good point.
I don't know if it was a good point.
No, in the, in the detailed list of those responses that I gave you, it will say automatic.
Oh, I know, I get to look at it, but I know they don't, so.
Okay, yeah, I hope that makes sense.
Chief, I had a question. In the staff report, it talks about we're in area G along with Manhattan Beach, Long Island, all these other cities. And with the automatic aid, if I understand it correctly, everyone in G is going to be notified, is that correct?
For?
The area G mutual aid, automatic mutual aid agreement? Because the way I read it was like they get notified, but then if they're not picking up, we go back to a couple of cities in that, that are outside that agreement that we have mutual aid with, like Torrance, Redondo, Manhattan Beach. So it's just confusing why we get through all these area G cities potentially and then end up back at some of those same cities. Unless I was reading it incorrectly.
So in regards to like a structured fire response?
Yeah.
Yeah, so in the instance that those, those, those units that are automatically dispatched, they could be on another call. So then they have to go to Plan B. So they have contingencies built in, like if Torrance isn't available, then we're going to go Redondo or.
Got it. I read it like all eleven or twelve, however many cities are in area G. Like there could be such a, I guess, catastrophe potentially where all the cities are engaged somewhere else at a fire, but then it went back to the same cities in area G for, it was almost like a callback. Like we didn't get you the first time, maybe I read it wrong.
I'm not sure.
I'll go back and look at it.
Yeah, I think this, the scenario means is, let's say, so I'm playing with matches at PCT Tower and I catch it on fire and there's also a fire at the South Bay, at the Lamo. And so we call for automatic aid, nobody shows up. Will it keep calling back to Torrance and say, you didn't pick up the first time, will you pick up the second time? It matters on the eighth floor.
No, if, if that instance were to happen, then we would go to the Region One Dispatch Center and then we would go outside, we would go to next level. So now we're out of the area, we're going to the region, you know, and we'll say, we need this number of engines to Pacific, you know.
If a high, in that scenario, if a high-rise fire, if you get called for a high-rise fire at PCT, I mean, they're our tallest buildings here, does that kick in automatic aid? Will automatically, we have, have people rolling in from outside agencies for a high-rise?
Yes. So it will come in probably a first alarm and I can go through that. And if we're rolling and we see flames showing, we're going to bump it up, third alarm, get it going right now. So we already have the whole thing rolling.
This is very comforting because that is me playing with matches on the.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at, so in that case, Redondo would show up automatically, Torrance would show up, LA County, Torrance again, LA County. Like all these engines and different assets would show up.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Wait, oh, there's more to the slideshow?
Yeah.
Oh, keep going, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Fascinating, thank you.
We, we nailed down the local response. I wanted to just speak briefly about master mutual aid and mutual aid in the state. So the state is divided into six fire rescue mutual aid regions. And each region has a regional fire and rescue coordinator who has the responsibilities for coordination and dispatch of regional resources like we just spoke about. We're in Region One, which is Santa Barbara County, San Luis Obispo, Ventura, LA County, and Orange County. And I have the OES chief who's going to zoom in in just a second here. So this will speak to the strike teams and you know that we had mentioned that, that I wanted to let the public know that a strike team is five engines from this area with a leader, a battalion chief. And we rendezvous at station two if we're called for mutual aid in another area. And so then we go out like that as a team. The request comes in, like I said, we will get ready to go. We recall firefighters and we'll staff a reserve engine while the four firefighters are gone on the mutual aid. And so that the city is still covered and then we're going out. And if you have any questions about, you know, the, the fire usually is covered by the state or the feds or the jurisdiction with the incident. And then we are reimbursed for the overtime and the apparatus and an admin fee. So I also want to let you know that over the last year, we have not been available because of our staffing levels for to go out on the fires. We did go to Orange County for three days because that would be like an immediate need where they were desperate. We were close by and we said, you know what, let's go ahead and send it. And then we're going to be receiving a check for twenty thousand dollars, which was, you know, like I said, for the personnel, for the apparatus and the ten percent admin fee. So I just want to educate on that, that piece. And, and again, we, we aren't available right now, but if they called and said, we really need you, you know, then we'll try and make that happen.
I remember we participated in a lot of strike missions when we were both first on council. So is there anything you need from the council to be able to get staffed up so you're able to do those strike missions to help our colleagues?
So right now, we are down, we have five vacancies in the fire department and I'm working with the city manager right now getting, doing a firefighter recruitment so that if we can fill all the seats in the fire department and then we would have enough people to send and.
Great, and the department, HR director just told us earlier that she's gotten the background check processed down to six to eight weeks, which is a huge improvement, so that's great.
Does that five count the three we promoted today or is that in addition to?
So how it's working is we had retirements, right? And so I've been promoting people up battalion chief, captain, I'm going up here. So now the vacancies are going to be down here in the firefighter rank. We have, we have one firefighter in paramedic school right now to prepare for the paramedic vacancy. But we really need, I don't know how long the process is going to be, I work with HR, but you know, we need to get going on that so that we can staff up and that'll reduce the overtime as well.
Yeah, I know this. It's not eight, it's, I mean, I'm not, so it's, it's, I just want to make sure it's not in addition to the ones we just promoted. So we don't have eight, that's five, okay.
Five, yeah.
Yeah, five.
The, yeah, the ratio when I think Rebecca Reddick capped the number of applicants per firefighter position at a hundred and over a hundred. And was that capacity in terms of number of applicants per position? So I know it's still a highly coveted position. So anything we can do to help, let us know on that. You're not done, are you?
No.
Could you, just, just for the audience who OES, Office of Emergency Services, can you just talk about briefly what triggers that type of call?
I'm going to let Chief Stone answer that.
Okay.
So he's next. We have him on Zoom. He's the assistant chief for, in Cal OES and he covers Region One South. Can you move him over or? Okay.
You got me there? Okay, so Mr. Mayor, members of the council, appreciate the opportunity to support Chief Lee in her presentation. My name is Dave Stone. I'm the Region One South Coordinator for California Governor's Office of Emergency Services. The Governor's Office is responsible for fire rescue, law enforcement, and emergency management. So one of the questions that came up, I noticed, had to do with master mutual aid versus automatic aid. And as the chief said, in nineteen fifty, the state of California designed, decided to enter into a Civil Defense and Disaster Act. And what that did was to combat the effects of earthquakes and civil unrest and also for the potential for, back then, the fifties were worried about the Cold War and the bomb. So a lot of it had to do with that. So it was, gave the opportunity for all fire department resources throughout the state of California to assist each other in helping each other with disasters. In about the nineteen seventies, the departments decided that they needed to hone it down to where it's more pinpoint or more specific. And so what they did was they created what they call the automatic aid agreement. So mutual aid is, it's always there, it's neighbor helping neighbor. And so the automatic aid actually pinpointed, for example, you have maybe a department that doesn't have a truck company, the ladder truck, and the department neighboring does. So they may say, hey, and then if I get a fire, will you give me your truck? And then I'll give you something else in return. So it's more of a tit for tat with, between agencies. So as the chief said, they have agreements with El Segundo, with LA County, LA City, and most of South Bay cities, which would be, Manhattan Beach would be the main one you'd have agreements with. And those agreements just basically say that you give me an engine to this area of the city and I'll give you a truck to that area of the city. Or might say, you give me a helicopter when I need it and I'll, for maybe an air rescue or maybe a brush fire, and I'll give you a paramedic unit. And generally, they specify a specific area of need. So it might be something in the city of El Segundo where maybe there's a, when you look at how your stations are laid out in a coverage, it might be in an area where there's less coverage. And so you ask that city, the neighboring city, to help you with that coverage. And then you do the same for them. And so that's a basic premise of automatic aid. And so one of the things that the chief did mention that there's back and forth between agencies and generally over, over a long period of time, if you took those numbers and project over a ten or twenty year period, it's probably relatively even by the time you're done. One of the other things that we provide, like I said, I work for the Governor's Office. Prior to that, I've been with the OES for seven years. Before that, I was with LA County Fire Department. I retired as an assistant fire chief. And my area of responsibility was, it was up in the Pomona areas where I was when I retired. And so this just gave me an opportunity to stay busy and also help out the fire service. So my main role is I coordinate automatic aid agreements. I coordinate mutual aid between areas. As you mentioned, area G is an operational area. Within the, kind of Los Angeles, there's actually six operational areas. El Segundo's in area G. And then within the, the region, there's five counties. So there's, there's actually ten total regi, uh, oper, operational areas, areas, excuse me, operational areas within that. And then each of the counties, usually outside of our region, mostly other regions are just a county equals an operational area. And then we do have agreements and we do work with Cal Fire and with local federal government agencies, like in the Angeles Forest and the Cleveland National Forest for this area. So one of the things that she also mentioned was reimbursement for disasters. And one of the things that we've always been proud of El Segundo is their involvement in the master mutual aid and also in our system when we have major fires. One of the things that the chief might not have mentioned was that you provide overhead resources with, example, via line medic or line EMT, you also provide your REMS, which is a rapid extraction module. We use that a lot in wooded areas. And so we've been very proud of the achievements and the use of those resources outside the city of El Segundo. And so all those get reimbursement through whether it's Cal Fire or through the federal governments. And our job at OES, we help coordinate the dispatch of those resources. And as the chief had mentioned, LA County Fire Department is Region One Coordinator. And I would usually work with the Region One Coordinator for day-to-day activities or if there's a disaster, a major brush fire, earthquake, hazmat spill on a freeway. We just recently had a mud debris flow in Forest Falls in San Diego County. And we did utilize some regional task forces, which are the Urban Search and Rescue, which El Segundo is also a member of for the local areas. And that's pretty much where my focus is. And I generally work with Chief Lee, usually on day-to-day activities for your city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Stone. Appreciate you being here.
No questions?
Any questions for Chief Stone? I don't think so. Thanks, chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Chief Lee.
So just lastly, we have agreement with Los Angeles Fire Department, with LA County, with all the other cities in area G. Hopefully you have a more clear picture on the aid given and received with Manhattan Beach and.
So, I mean, we have a clear picture, but the picture is, is that it's basically two for one consistently. I mean, basically, that's consistently for over three years, it's been. And I, and my concern is they're now going down to seven. Fire, you know, they've reduced their fire department by seven, to seven. And so is that trend going to continue to get the, is the, is the delta going to get bigger? So I just, I, I don't know if we, if we had, have had, have we had conversations with them about it? And I just, we just need to have that dialogue and put some understanding in that, yeah, we're here for mutual aid, but we're also not going to carry them. And I just, I want to make sure that we either present with, to them some type of framework that says, we're going to provide mutual aid as long as it's mutual, but once over a certain threshold, it's going to trigger a cost, a charge back. You know, you know, one of the things, you know, we, we, you know, as a council, we have to look at our budget. And, you know, the, the fire department budget is quite large and we want to make sure that we are providing the services to our, our residents. And if we are continuing to cover Manhattan Beach two to one, I think that does, you know, we're now carrying the cost to also carry Manhattan Beach. And I just want to make sure that that's not.
Right, and I think it'll be interesting to see, I know you said even as soon as tonight, you'll get the twenty twenty-two numbers. But I, I do believe the trend though is getting a little more even, at, at least from what I saw in terms of Manhattan Beach.
I thought it was, I thought it was.
From nineteen to twenty to twenty-one.
You see in twenty twenty, when people are home during the pandemic, and that's where you see the real imbalance because that lays bare that they have thirty-eight thousand nighttime residents and we have seventeen thousand. So those hospital transports on ambulances during the pandemic took a lot longer, right? Because intakes took a lot longer, you had to wait in line. So I think that when you have periods of prolonged residential, so when you have a giant commercial shutdown like we did during the pandemic, I think there might be a little bit of a distortion on that that makes it look like they're leaning a little more heavily on us. But I think that might be a bit of a, twenty twenty may turn out to be a bit of a outlier year as far as the mix on that. So I would not be surprised if it evens out just a little bit, just given that their residential mix and our commercial mix tend to, to reflect on each other a bit.
Maybe you should look at why do we need mutual aid less? Maybe because we're staffed adequately, maybe because we have our fire codes and building codes enforced and we don't have a lot of fires, you know, there, maybe we should look at, not why are we giving them help more, but why do we need help less?
Well, I think that's actually a little bit of the, the direction it might be. I, I, I tend to be maybe a little bit more, more giving toward their staffing model. But I think that, that I think part of the concern is that they may be able to have a little more flexibility in the way they're staffing because we are staffing per an evaluated plan, right? We've all seen the, the phone book that you gave us of like, here's what it takes to do a city that does this. And I think we have a pretty good understanding of why our numbers and ratios are the way they are and why we have thirty-four firefighters, you know, and, and all of those sorts of things. And I think our concern is, like, look at the, the NATO model, right? Is everybody paying their two percent, sort of the NATO model? And, and I don't know how that necessarily gets addressed. I mean, that might be a city manager, city manager thing or mayor to mayor thing. But I think we want to make sure that if things do get serious, that they have the right number of people to help us, just like we have the right number of people to help them.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll keep an eye on that for sure.
Can you go back to the? Can you go back to the, um, the overview that had the total mutual aid piece on it? I think it's right up front, no? There you go. So in looking at this, and by the way, thank you, it was a very good presentation, by the way. It was very informative. Um, when I'm looking at this, I think what the reason why we brought this up and wanted to have this on the agenda was that I think we wanted to have a better idea what we were looking at. And truthfully, I actually believe that this was gonna be a much higher percentage than it actually is. When I'm looking at this, even in twenty twenty-one, I, I think in a sense, we're looking at a statistically insignificant number that affects the total. And I think the idea of what we were trying to get to here is how do we create more efficiencies within, within the fire department? That's, that's really what we were trying to get to. And when I'm looking at this, and it's fascinating to see the numbers and how everything works, and it's a very important program to have. Um, and I appreciate you explaining to that. I just believe as a council, I, I, I don't believe mutual aid discussion is going to affect the numbers that we're trying to affect on a bigger, bigger picture. That's all. And honestly, I expected this to be much different than what it is. And I had it in my head, and I think we all did, that, oh, my God, we, we're sending a fire truck over to Manhattan Beach every day. And the reality is, we, we're not. We send it over twenty times a year.
That's right.
So that's all I'm saying, is that I think this is great. We wanted to have the data, we have the data. I think it shows that we need to look in other areas for our efficiencies. But great presentation and very informative, and thank you for that.
Chief, are you done?
Um, unless you have any further questions.
I just wanna take a moment. Congrats on the six, seven promotions today for the fire department.
Yes.
You did a great job. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to, that was just a receive and file. We're on to item fifteen, ordinance of many El Segundo municipal code Title thirteen to adopt by reference with certain local amendments, Parts Two, Two Point Five, Three, Four, Five, Six, Eight, Nine, Ten, Eleven, the Twenty Twenty Two California Building Standards Code, the Twenty Twenty One International Property Maintenance and Swimming Pool and Spa Codes, and the Twenty Twenty One Uniform Solar Hydronics and Geothermal Code. And we've got several different items here. And I know this is probably just a general update. Mr. Allen?
It is, uh, yeah, it is a routine code adoption. Um, unless there's any specific questions, we have our, our building official here, Seavash, for Sahab Sabahian, um, who can answer any questions. We do have a presentation, um, so we'll quickly walk through that.
Does it cover, yeah, okay, great, if it covers the reason why we're doing this as well?
It does, and there's a couple of key, um, important factors, which is where we adopt provisions that are more restrictive than, than the state standards. And so those are important things that we need to cover tonight. See ya.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, before I stop, did some revision, the revision that you had to tie this, I wanted to advise.
So, uh, city clerk, this has already been posted along with the materials with this item? These, these revisions have already been posted online or been made available to the public? Okay. Thank you.
Um, I provided a quick overview of the code adoption. Uh, every three years, the state of California adopts codes by selecting model codes, and they adopt the code by making amendments, and they call it, uh, building standard codes. And this time, we're talking about two thousand twenty-two. Before that, in two thousand nineteen, also, we did the same process. We came to the council to go to the process of adopting the code, uh, two thousand nineteen California standard code. And, uh, we did some amendments. And this year, also, we carried the same amendments we did to two thousand nineteen, carry over to the two thousand twenty-two. And I'll take you through the process. Uh, what is, and the state of California has adopted two thousand twenty-two, uh, California Building Standards Code in July first, two thousand twenty-two. That means its jurisdiction within the state have six months to adopt the code, either read amendments or resort amendments. And the code goes into effect January first, two thousand twenty-three. What it means also is that the current code that we have in effect, which is two thousand nineteen, uh, California, uh, Building Standard Code, is still to be into effect until January first of two thousand twenty-three. And what is this, the, the building standards is, uh, regulating the governing, uh, the, the design and construction of the buildings. And it provides, and it is, if you look at the California Code, Code of Regulations, it's twenty-eight titles. And the Building Standard Code is Title twenty-four of that California Code of Regulation. That's what you, uh, we refer to as Title twenty-four. And I'll have a slide that shows you what is contents into that Title twenty-four. And as I mentioned, Title twenty-four provides a minimum standards to safeguard the public. And therefore, when, if you amend, uh, make an amendment, that amendment has to be equivalent or more restrictive than what the state has adopted. We cannot go be, be less restrictive. And the state, uh, law allows, authorized local government to enact ordinances making, uh, the building standard amendments to the California Building Standards Code, uh, provided to provide based on three reasons. And one is climatic, one is tropical, and one is geological. So we need to have, when we amend the code, or we adopt a code amendment, we need to have one of these reasons. And in the resolution, we have al- already listed the amendment we have, we're proposing, and we, and we have given the reason why we are adopting that code, which is one of these three items here. Uh, what is California Building Standard Code consists of? Uh, you can see the thirteen parts, of course, Part Seven is vacant, so it's a total of twelve, uh, parts. Building code, for example, is Part One, uh, residential code, uh, building code is, uh, Part Two, residential is Two Point Five. And like fire code, for example, is, uh, Part Nine. So these are the twelve parts listed here, and we are adopting, adopting these twelve parts. In addition to what California has adopted, we have adopted additional, uh, inter- uh, codes, which are listed here, one of these International Property Maintenance Code. The California State Standard Code is, just talks about the design of the new buildings or addition or alteration, does not cover maintenance of building after it's built. So that's why we are adopting this two, twenty, twenty-one International Property Maintenance Code that talks about maintenance of the building. Uh, and either inside the building or outside the building. Majority of complaints we get is from outside the building, building are not kept in the good condition, so... Um, as I mentioned, we have carry over the amendment we did two thousand to two thousand nineteen, also to two thousand twenty-two codes. But in addition to that, we have two, uh, major amendments that we have done. Is one into this seismic gas shut-off valve, which is not required by, currently by plumbing code. We, uh, we, we propose these amendments. And because a lot of city jurisdictions, uh, other neighbors jurisdictions, like City of Calver City, uh, LA City, um, Malibu, they have already adopted these, these amendments, and they're already enforcing this seismic gas shut-off valve. And that would apply to new buildings, applies to alteration to the buildings when the valuation of the work they do to the buildings exceeding ten thousand dollars. And the third item is when the building is sold. For example, if a condo is sold, that condo has to comply with the requirements to, to install this seismic gas, gas shut-off valve, not the whole building, not the whole building that has all the condominium, just that single unit. Uh, fire code amendments, we have...
I'm sorry, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So what, what's the cost of this valve and the ongoing expense to maintain it?
I did a Google search and also asked our inspection staff to talk to the contractors. The cost is about less than a thousand dollars each for each installation, including labors and the device.
I have a better question. Sorry, I'm not supposed to say...
Tell us, yeah, you should never say you have a better question or a good idea, because it has to be both.
The city of Los Angeles has a point-of-sale requirement on this seismic gas shut-off valve. And, uh, they have, you have to get a nine A report from the city and, uh, at point-of-sale. So is this one of those things where we're gonna adopt this code and we're gonna have no means by which of enforcing this on point-of-sale?
That's something that definitely as nine A is when the, you need to get the property report from, when you sell property from the city of LA. And they, they had all the requirement, for example, you need to provide, uh, smoke detectors, you need to provide...
Well, that's state law, that is, that's state law. But their nine A is they want you to pay the fee from the city and ultimately have someone come out and sign off on it. That's authorize to sign off on it and fill out the, the form, and it's, hmm, it's like a fee grab, right? But seismic shut-off valve is something that is required. And so companies will, uh, check the permits online to see, well, is there a seismic shut-off valve? Was it permitted? Oh, it's on there, but it wasn't permitted, so now you need a permit. And it's a, it's a point-of-sale thing, but then it has, it gets dealt with through escrow. But my question is, we have no means by which, we have no department at the city that can handle this point-of-sale requirement, do we?
No, that, it is an enforcement matter. I, we're, we're probably not going to see this, um, because we don't have the mechanisms in place at point-of-sale at this time. But we will see it for any building permits that do exceed the construction value of ten million, or ten thousand, uh, or any new construction. That's why we'll, we'll see this in, in most occurrences.
Okay, thank you.
I still think my question was good.
The state fire code requires to have sprinkler for all new buildings, not all new buildings. However, uh, our fire department is, likes to amend the code to require this fire sprinkler throughout for all new buildings. That's one of the amendments we have. And also, there's a, uh, amendment to require sprinkler throughout when there's addition to a house, for example, when it's more than, uh, one, eight, eleven hundred square foot. That's what, one of the amendments that they're proposing. And so these are the two amendments that the fire department is proposing to this current two thousand twenty-two code.
Would this be the time for objections? And my concern is this, if you look at how we charge for water, if you have fire suppression sprinklers in a house, which is a new construction code requirement, you are required to have a one-inch line coming in. Your basic cost for ready-to-serve one-inch line versus ready-to-serve, you know, what, it's like half inch, which is a standard house, there's a huge price difference between that, right? And when you talk about, oh, she's coming up here. I'll just, I'll wait till she gets up here.
But we're also joined by a fire marshal who can help address some of these questions.
First, I just learned today, first fire marshal of the South Bay, female fire marshal of the South Bay, right? Congrats. Would you please address, uh, Councilman Nichols' question or comment?
Yes, sir. So sprinkler, residential sprinkler systems were designed to be a cost-effective, um, solution for life safety purposes. And, um, it's pretty standard for all, all new construction, you have, residentially have to have sprinklers. This amendment for residential specifically is only gonna be if it's over a thousand square feet of a remodel, which most of our remodels are way less than that. So it's not going to be something that you're gonna see happen too, too often on the actual remodel side of things. This is more so for the commercial. This is, is more, um, consistent for the commercial side because of the hazards we have in the city. And it's also to be consistent with what the rest of the South Bay is doing. Uh, all the fire marshals in the South Bay have met, and we have all, um, we wanna try to make sure that most of our amendments are very similar, because a lot of times we get, well, LA City does it this way, or Torrance does it this way, and it becomes really complicated, because there should be somewhat of a standardized way of how we do things and make sure we're on the same page for the most part. So that's where that came from.
But just from a practical standpoint, uh, you know, it's like your property taxes will not be reassessed if you don't add on more than four hundred ninety-nine square feet, right? Because that doesn't trigger anything at the county. So you'll have people that will add on four hundred ninety-nine square feet, and then they'll go and pull another permit, and they'll add on another four nine nine, another four nine nine. And the property taxes never get adjusted for that, right? So we add this limit on there, and now you're gonna have people that are gonna start to game the system, because fire suppression sprinklers are not cheap. And this monthly ongoing cost for having the ready-to-serve, uh, one-inch line, it's no joke. I mean, we're talking a hundred-dollar difference, just right off the bat. And so, uh, I don't know, I, I, I'm not, I, I, I'm all for trying to keep things consistent throughout, you know, the South Bay. But in my personal experience, a thousand-dollar or a thousand-square-foot, uh, addition or remodel is, is normal. I mean, especially if you're gonna consider square foot that's being touched, not just being added on to trigger this requirement. And I think this would only make, uh, it harder and more onerous for the residents of town to invest in their own properties and, and beautify our town with their own money. So I, I, I understand where it's coming from, I just don't, I, you're just, you're adding, you're just gonna, you're adding twenty-five thousand dollars to everyone's budget that's doing a remodel, and then their ongoing budget and just cost of having ready-to-serve water, which, you know, they can never use those sprinklers over a ten-year period. And what it costs them simply to have those sprinklers there? You know, because then the next thing's gonna be that, well, residential sprinkler systems don't get tested on a regular basis, right? So is that water stagnant? Is it still pressurized? Like, how often do we need to test this sprinkler systems? Is this gonna be something that now that these homes have residential fire suppression sprinklers in them, now they're required annually or biannually to do tests? Like, I'm not, I'm just saying, like, you and I cannot foresee the future and what the state of California is gonna ask us to do.
They've made it very, um, they, the reason why California is trying to keep the, uh, fire sprinkler amendment in the fire code for that reason, for residential, because, um, a lot of states are trying to get rid of it. So they've made it so they can make it as cost-effective as possible. That's why they can use like a CPVC. And also that, um, you don't have, it's not required to have maintenance. If you wanna maintain it, that's on the owner, but you do not have to. And they've made it very clear that they, they're not gonna try to make it any more complicated or costly to put these in, because they want them. Um, most of the, the remodels and additions we're seeing are ADUs, which the state, that, there's a bill that says we can't sprinkler them. So, um, so we're, we, we can't even do that there. So really, when it comes to these homes, most of these homes are not, are not going that big on the remodel. And, um, and to throw in sprinklers for that, it would, I mean, I don't think we'd see it very often at, at all, because ADUs are the trend right now.
You just triggered something.
Yes, sir.
So the state said for ADUs, you cannot include them, because they saw that as a deterrent, return on invested capital, right?
There's more to encourage that.
Well, we, yeah, we have this dilemma in town where we're doing this overlay to understand where we can add, where we can add additional density of housing in town. And what I heard Councilman Nichols say is the subject matter expert resident realtor up here is that the cost of doing projects is gonna go up pretty considerably if you wanna add a thousand square feet or more. I mean, twenty-five thousand dollars, that is, that is a lot of money. And I would say that there's still, isn't there a huge inventory of homes in town that are about to be redone, probably over the next ten to twenty years, old-style bungalows, where they're gonna call them a remodel? They're gonna add more than a thousand square feet, and it's gonna, I just, I just think it's interesting if the state said, look, we're not compromising safety to the extent that we're not gonna include them in the ADUs? Why, why are we considering, I mean, I understand your points, don't get me wrong.
And there is, there are requirements for some ADUs to have them based on, um, distance to hydrants and also, um, depending on, it's square footage. It does kick in at a certain square footage. So there is a, there is a need, there is a means. What these systems are designed for, and that's why they're supposed to be more cost-effective, is it is for life safety, because people aren't maintaining their smoke alarms anymore, they're not putting them in, they're, they're not taking care of them. But this is gonna buy them that time, especially now that we have furniture, like IKEA furniture, that burns really fast and really hot. The escape time to get out of a house right now is about three minutes. So that, those sprinkler systems are gonna buy that time for the life safety component. That could beat us responding there in time. That could be the life-saving that we need in these types of buildings. And, um, that's where, that's where I'm coming from on this. And I do understand with residential sprinklers, there is a cost, but it is supposed to be much less because of the use of the CPVC. And, um, they do say it ends up being about twenty-five hundred to three grand more on average to, to put one in. So it's not, it's not as big of a cost. And to me, like, the life safety balance of that seems a way to, to me, make the most sense to do that.
To respond to your issue about the cost on a monthly basis, there's currently a court case that's challenging the fire flow component of, um, the fee. It's like it's baked into the, every customer in town, depending on the size of their meter, um, pays a capacity charge, which then is the, um, the entire system... Pays a capacity charge, which then is the, um, the entire system. Is, is spread amongst every customer based upon their, their meter size. So that's being litigated, but what I haven't heard yet is from the consultants is. When they lower like from an inch to a three quarter inch. Um, and then they go to the bigger, uh, companies which may have sixteen, eighteen, you know. Huge lines are gonna have, they're gonna be lowered. Is how much difference will that make? Cause the same total cost is going to get spread. So if you reduce the size of all these meters. You know, how much of a difference are you gonna make financially? I don't know the answer to that. I haven't heard the experts. I don't know if Elias, you know, has heard what that will actually do, uh, you know. But you're right, that is, that's an issue, but that, the courts may say soon that we, we can't charge for that, but I don't know how that will change the, the actual cost.
What's unfortunate is we did an, an enormous amount of. Back and forth on deciding on how to reset our water rates. And this was the single demarcation. Going to that one inch line is the, the line of when you are paying de facto commercial rates on water. And I think that that, that is where a little bit of the heartache comes from is that we are, had, had we known this was coming. We probably would have looked at those rates. There's no way to know this is coming, but not, not throwing rocks at you. But the fact that that is how we allocated our costs of how we are purchasing water from West Basin. I think that might be something that, I mean, I don't, we, we do it every two years on our, our water rates. That might be something, every five?
Yeah.
Or that was our tradition of doing it every five till we got how far behind we were getting?
I don't know the last. How long has it been? Two or three years?
Uh, yeah, but it's a big family.
I mean, that might be something worth revisiting if, if this is something that comes to pass.
Also, another option could be to go with evaluation instead of a square foot that we set a certain maybe a fifty percent valuation or something along those lines. That could be, um, an option we go with as well.
Cause right now we have a new construction trigger.
Yes.
Correct, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding, uh, your department is. Trying, you know, if somebody keeps up, you know, there was this nuance in the code. That I've used a couple of times. Whereas if you keep up fifty percent of the walls, it's considered a remodel, it's not new construction. You save a little bit on fees, especially the school fees, because there's a different calculation for new construction for a school fee versus a remodel for school fees. And you're not required to put in fire suppression sprinklers, which would then trigger the one inch line and all the other pain and suffering that comes with this. Right? But it's my understanding your department is looking at it like, well, you're. This is a new house, right? It's, you're, you're adding on more square footage than you're keeping and. You're touching every square footage and we wanna treat, we want you to be treated like new construction. Is that accurate?
Yeah, all new construction is treated as, under the current code, yeah.
Even if it's like a massive remodel, keeping up fifty percent of the walls, you're still like, okay, no, we're gonna, we wanna start triggering some of these other requirements, yes?
That, that's correct. So we could use a similar methodology in this scenario.
I mean, if somebody's rebuilding an entire house, then, okay, fine. But, you know, I think this, like, this limit on any, like, a thousand square foot remodel, I mean, that's. I just feel like that is so harsh because a thousand square foot remodel, twenty-five thousand dollars on a thousand square foot remodel. That's a deterrent. That's someone who's not going to do the remodel.
Yeah, so the, the, the provision includes things like the, the wall surface area that's removed and the floor area that's removed and it is a fifty percent. Uh, marker that triggers the full demo, the, the full demo equivalent. And so we can use a similar metric, uh, just to be consistent for, for. This provision as well.
Yeah, cause I mean, I would go as so far as like, okay, fine, you're adding on a thousand square feet. So do you need fire suppression sprinklers in the house that you're not, the portion of the house you're not touching? And you're only adding them to that new addition? Picking up what I'm putting down?
Totally get that.
Right? And so it's the, I'm, I'm trying to save you guys some pain and suffering here. But the one inch line triggered, that, that is something that really needs to be looked at because. I mean, I know for me personally, it's, I look at that bill every month and I think how I can, I could not be at my house for a whole month. Not use any water, let my lawn die. And my water bill is still a hundred and fifty dollars.
Same, my back house vacant, same, every month fixed.
And it's, because it's ready to serve, it's there, it's ready to go, but I'm not using it. And so. I, yeah, fire spread and the guy with the one inch line. The fire suppression sprinklers that he's not using, he's never used in ten years, right? He started adding up that cost of what he's paid the city just to have the water ready for that. It's, uh, it's, it's crazy and it's, it's not how I think we should be treating.
Unless there's further thoughts, I wanna ask. Can we maybe come back on this one? It sounds like you guys could maybe you two could go look at this so we could pull this, or is it too late? We'd have to amend the ordinance at this point because it's already in there?
Well, this need to be adopted before and in place, or let's say adopted in place before the end of the year. So.
I, I remember in the past you, you, yeah, you edited an ordinance on the fly. I know we don't have much.
Oh, no, no, that's, that, that part of it. I mean, if we just wanted to take this section and, and, and remove it, that's not, you know, this. Tonight is the first reading, this is, because this is being adopted by reference. Tonight is not a public hearing. It gets introduced and then the next meeting is the public hearing and the adoption. It's just. A screw relog, the way we do it in California for some reason. So if you just wanted to delete that section tonight, then we can do that. But if you, um. If we wait till the next meeting to amend it, then we're gonna have to have another.
Okay, so why don't we get to the rest? Cause there's more, right? And then we'll come back to that once we go to introduce the ordinance, we can talk about that.
For us, those are, these are the ones that are mentioned here. We have, um, the energy storage systems, which is new to the code. We, um, as a South Bay amended that a little bit as well. Um, just to make sure that those are much more safer since we're still learning a lot about them and they are catching fire all the time now.
Is that, is that like a Tesla power wall?
Yes, like the Tesla power walls, yes. And then we did remove some stuff, um, that just wasn't necessary. We had some not business friendly, um, and a lot of residences complained about the. Setbacks on the solar, so we took that out. Um, there was also complaints from contractors about this UL listing certification requirement. Which was keeping a lot of the smaller, uh, businesses from actually working in our city. So we did take that out as well, but for the most part, we did carry most of it over. The only major changes were for the energy storage systems. And then for commercial and residential sprinklers.
One more question. What is the fire protection requirement for those energy storage systems?
So basically what it's doing is it's making it so they have to be either in a detached garage. Or outside the home. So you couldn't put them inside your garage, your attached home garage. But you could put it in a detached garage, detached storage room, anything like that or outside. It would just keep it from putting it inside the, your garage. Right now the code's very stringent to let you do it anyways. And since we are seeing a lot of fires with these and the wa- amount of water it takes to put these out. It's just safer to keep them outside the home.
Got it. So I thought it was gonna be like a chemical suppression system.
Oh, no, no, nothing, nothing crazy like that, no.
Any, okay, thank you. Please continue. Oh, you're done. Thank you, Ms. Piscara. Yeah, I appreciate it.
I gave you revise, uh, to the resolution. This slide shows you where the changes are. Uh, on the page one twenty-four of the agenda packet is where the changes is, uh, highlighted. Uh, we add the section one of four point one point four. And on page one twenty-five, we delete, I think, section nine eighteen. And we replace with the section five eleven. These are the two changes we have on page one twenty-four and one twenty-five of the, to the agenda packet. Staff recommends waiver of the first reading and is scheduled the public hearing for November fifteen. The next slide just shows you the timeline for adoption of the code. Today, that's the first meeting we had. Uh, next time, uh, the next action item is for public. Publication notice, uh, public notice. And which will happen on November third, the second will be on November, uh, ten. This by Californ- by, uh, government code section six oh, sixty-sixty-six. At least we have to have to public notification. And on, uh, November fifteen, we're coming back here for public hearing and second reading and approval of the ordinance. As I mentioned before, the code go, goes into effect on January first, two thousand twenty-three. By then, still the current code will be in effect. And that concludes my presentation.
Can you go back for three slides for me? Sorry, back to the amendments, keep going. Right there. Cause this seismic gas valve, I wanna understand this. Cause I, I, I was so caught off guard with the fire suppression sprinklers, sorry for going in reverse. Ten thousand dollars, construction, you would require then us, a homeowner to add this fire. You guys have all spent ten thousand dollars fixing something, right? A roof. Painting your house is twenty thousand dollars. You know, so I, I'm, I'm trying to understand, like, any alteration to the existing building with a construction value of ten thousand dollars would, would trigger this? I mean, that's. You put in turf, it's over ten grand. And a new gas valve, you need to put in a seismic valve. So I'm just trying to understand this threshold.
This threshold, it was adopted by, as I said, in, by other jurisdictions, we're just doing the same thing, like City of L A had that the same thing for.
I, C M A can clarify as well, wouldn't this be only applicable to things that require a building permit?
That's correct. Like painting does not require to have a building permit.
So painting your home, putting in turf, wo- wouldn't qualify for, for those things?
Yeah, but you need a building permit to do a water heater, don't you?
To replace the water heater, yes.
I mean, you need a building permit for.
Building permit for a new roof, right? Building permit for solar? What if I'm changing out the windows? Do I need a building permit to change out the windows?
If it exceeds a ten thousand dollar, this is a baseline. As Cia's mentioned, this is consistent with other jurisdictions. Uh, if, if we wanna talk about different baselines that we can, uh, if there wasn't appetite for a threshold at ten thousand valuation, we can look at other valuations.
I just, again, I see it as like, we want people to come get permits.
Yeah.
For things that plenty of people in this world are willing to do the work without permits. We want them to come.
Plumbers don't install these things for free either. So even if the list price is seven hundred fifty dollars, it's gonna cost you the same amount to, to put it in.
So that, that's my, that's just my concern is, is this threshold that then triggers it. It's, you know, now you have somebody who feels like they were doing the right thing and coming and hey, I'm gonna get my permit because, you know, I'm getting a new roof. And you're like, oh, by the way, you know, you, you exceed this and the person at the counter doing their job. You exceeded ten thousand dollar threshold, I'm gonna need you to, you know, also. Before we can sign off on this permit, you're gonna have to put in a seismic shut off valve. And they're like, what? And then they call the plumber and the plumber's like, cool, five hundred fifty, seven hundred fifty bucks. Like, wait, what? How does my, how does the gas meter and the seismic shut off valve have anything to do with my roof?
Yeah, uh, you know, at the end of the day, oh, the overall grand. Vision is, you know, this is a values based decision. This is an effort to, to improve the, the life safety in, in our city. Uh, and then to the chief's earlier point, uh, during the previous presentation. We do an excellent outstanding job in community risk reduction, which is something that our fire department is working towards. And so this is one of those. Efforts. It may not be related to re-roofing or redoing your windows, but this is an effort to improve life safety. Overall, and similar with the, the sprinklers, you know, that, that is a, it's an effort to improve those, those circumstances.
Well, in an effort, could we not do like a, a communication outreach to say, hey, you know, come get your gas valve at a discounted price. We're gonna buy in bulk and, you know, show you how to install them and do a community outreach rather than. You, that would, to me, would be a great way, because, you know, a lot of some of these older homes. Not gonna do constructions, but they may wanna put this in, but they don't know that they should be putting that in. And that to me would be a better use.
I, I think that's a great idea. I, I think it's a little bit separate from this, but there are cities that offer rebate programs for these types of programs. There's a. You'd have to find a funding source, but, uh, I don't think that should prevent us proceeding with, with this type of measure.
I don't, I don't, I honestly don't mind the, the point of sale. I wouldn't mind requiring it on any, you know, major remodel. Right? Cause they're doing it, they already have a plumber there, they already have a twenty thousand dollar plumbing bid. You know, so to add that on there, that'll be absorbed and not felt, but I think one, I, I just think mixed in with something else that has absolutely nothing to do with it. Is that the straw that broke the camel's back and you're gonna have people at this mic yelling at the people that sit up here. And we're yelling at your staff and like, that, it's just, it's not. That's not the interaction that I hope to have between the city and the residents. And so, I mean, I, if. I don't know if we can, but like just that second bullet point, just whoop, bye-bye. Right? And then we're gonna have to figure out how this point of sale thing is gonna work. You know, because if we have no, nothing that's required by law and we don't have anything voted and, and still, and then it's an outreach thing and like. You know, now you have to teach escrow companies that, hey, you can't close an escrow and ask sale and else you're gonna do unless you have. Proof that, you know, this seismic valve has been changed, right? I mean, it's just, it's, it's gonna be hard to do. The best way to, the best way to do it and to get it in over time. Is when there's major remodel that happens, it gets changed, right?
Is there a valuation that, I, it's hard to. Project valuations, but, but given your experience and, and we can, you know, Cia can chime in as well. Is, if there's a valuation that makes sense, a typical room addition at two hundred fifty thousand dollars or. Remodel of, of greater than a hundred thousand, you know, is there a valuation that makes sense?
I mean, to me, it's more of, is it a structural change or not to the building? A window, this roof, solar.
I mean, somebody comes in.
People shouldn't be penalizing for upgrading, but if you're spending the money to structurally change your house, to me.
Yeah, two hundred fifty thousand dollars and over. Like, cause someone has to come in and they have to give an estimate. This is what I'm estimating it's gonna cost me to redo my house. Right? At that point, that is, that's absorbed into that number and it's never even felt. Any, any other like one-off? You know, like they, they say, like, in my business, when you're buying a house, people talk about millions and hundreds of thousands. But then they get into a request for repair and the seller won't give them two hundred bucks, they wanna cancel the deal. Right? Cause two hundred dollars is tangible, hundreds of thousand dollars is monopoly money. It's not tangible. You don't know what you could buy with it. And so that ten thousand dollar number is just, there's far too many little things that hit that threshold. And would just piss people off. And I don't want you to get that, I, I just, I don't want you to.
I appreciate that.
Feel that brunt. I wanna talk to your manager, like, great. What is this about? Seismic shut off valve and you're gonna be like, nickel. Uh, so I would push it up to like two hundred fifty thousand dollars threshold.
Do we wanna agree upon two hundred fifty thousand dollars?
That works for me.
But I do think we should do some, I don't think people realize. That that's something they should be adding to their home, especially some of these old homes, and we should do a community outreach. Talk about what it is, say, cause a lot of people don't know.
No.
Do I have it or not, damn it? So how do you teach them? To see if you have it or not, what it looks like, do like a whole video. Put it out there saying, here's where you get it, here's, and let people start. To, to educate them and then they'll, they'll start to do it. But I, I can probably guarantee you that eighty to ninety percent of the people don't even know if they have it. Or that they should have it.
That's an important note. We'll, we'll reach out to the gas company who, who will know of, uh, funding sources and we'll, we'll look at options ourselves.
Okay.
Yeah, and put a video. Sam had a thought. Well, actually, again, Councilmember Pierce, I guess, she's the right idea, it would be like, yes, don't you see? Because most people, I, I, I think at this point, I mean, there is a, a, probably a, a communal supposition that the gas company automatically shuts off the gas and we don't need these anymore. You know, because I, I, when I moved in, I, I saw mine, it was laying there like, right, it would saw it out while they did some renovation at some point, like just sitting on the side. So I think there is probably room as a, a city and I know the gas company takes no ownership of these because they exist on the, the property side, so it's a, it's a plumbing issue. Uh, but it's probably worth it as a city to look at something in conjunction, but I have no objection to. Making it part of larger remodels because you can sense the exasperation of someone when they show up for something totally unrelated. And I, I was gonna say, coupling with that, we may wanna look at something similar on the sprinkler piece. Um, just in terms of, uh, just cause I'm really leery of, of, you know, having just gouged people on the one inch sprinkler line.
Why don't we, Mr. Allen, what do you suggest there?
I, so I, I took a couple of moments to look up the code section regarding the loss of legal non-conforming status. So what triggers a complete demo of a structure? Is the fifty percent of the existing perimeter wall height, uh, and the original foundation is removed, demolished, replaced, entire building must be brought into conformity. Um, and so if there was comfort level with being consistent with that provision, which mandates if you exceed this threshold. You have to bring your entire structure up to current zoning code. Uh, if that's an acceptable threshold, we can reference that for the sprinklers as well.
Anyone not comfortable with what Mr. Allen suggested? Okay, great. So, Mr. Hensley, we have an ordinance you've already drafted, we've, we've got a couple of changes.
I think what I mean, what the language that Michael just stated is fine, and then the ten thousand will be changed to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Great. You wanna read it by title only and then we'll have, introduce it, please?
Okay, there's, um. First there's a resolution and then there's an ordinance. A resolution making express findings and determinations supporting city modifications to the. making express findings and determinations supporting city modifications to the California Building Standards Code because of local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions is ready for adoption.
Who would like to move approval?
So moved.
Thank you. Do a second.
Second.
Call those in favor.
I, I.
I just have one question. You know, these go into effect in twenty twenty, January twenty twenty-three. Is our engineer that's doing the pool, engineering the, the plunge looking at these new modifications? I don't want to, you with the plunge?
Yes, we had intended to prepare and submit the, the drawings to our sister department before December. But now we're gonna go back and, you know, we're coming back to city council in December, try to reduce the cost, as you know. So that may delay us. So we're still gonna try our best, but it's gonna be cutting it very close. So we may not be able to submit the plans before end of this, this year, but we're gonna try our best. But, but we knew about these changes.
But is there anything in here that goes into effect January first that we haven't?
I don't think so because frankly, the sprinkler system and the fire alarm was already intended to be part of this.
There's nothing else in the new code? Then now we're gonna say, well, we didn't, okay.
No, everything is gonna be, it really should not affect, this should not affect the plunge.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
We still need to introduce, yeah, Cia, please.
Sure. Just quickly, plunge is subject to historical building because it's a local historical building. And historical code, which is adopted by California, requires to have a sprinkler building and also fire alarm. So that's mandatory. So in general, if you're building the plans, as Mr. Elias mentioned, if the plans are submitted prior to July, Ju, January first, two thousand twenty-three, they're still subject to two thousand nineteen codes. But if they come after January first, then they need to comply with the code. But I don't see anything that would affect any, would not happen.
I just want to come back now and say, oh, now we have to delay another year because we just.
Now, the teen center, on the other hand, will need.
Who would like to introduce the ordinance? I read the title only earlier.
Let me, let me read that first. An ordinance adopting the two, twenty twenty-two edition of the California Building Code, twenty twenty-two California Residential Code, twenty twenty-two California Electrical Code, twenty twenty-two Mechanical Code, twenty twenty-two California Plumbing Code, twenty twenty-two California Energy Code, twenty twenty-two California Fire Code, twenty twenty-two California Historical Building Code, twenty twenty-two California Existing Building Code, twenty twenty-two California Green Building Standards Code, twenty twenty-one International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, twenty twenty-one International Property Maintenance Code, twenty twenty-one Solar, Hydraulic, and Geothermal Code with certain appendices and amendments and amending the El Segundo Miss Code to reflect such adoption. And this is just introduction.
Who would like to introduce?
Pierstik said moved.
Thank you. Just an introduction. Appreciate it. Thank you. That's it for that item, Madam Clerk, correct?
This will be brought back for a public hearing at the January seventeenth, just, wait, I'm sorry, December, no, January, January fifteenth, I'm sorry, what did I say? November fifteenth, November fifteenth council meeting, sorry.
Thank you. All right, we're on to reports. City Clerk?
Just quick reminder, ballot box is open and teen center, vote center will open Saturday and run through Tuesday, the eighth. And also just besides two seats open, we also have three measures. Measure BT, measure W, and measure T. So, and that's all I got for you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, City Treasurer's not here. Councilmember Drew?
Just real quick, El Segundo Boys Water Polo, second round of CIF playoffs is Thursday night at Costa Mesa. So anybody who wants to make a trip down the OC, had a tough traffic time, is welcome to do so. But good luck to those guys and we'll see how it goes. That's all I got.
Yeah, best wishes to them and your son. All right, let's see, council member, I've lost my order. Councilmember Nickel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last night, Halloween, right, it was, I was so happy to see the crowds. You know, it, it was another sign that we are out of this pandemic from just the way society was functioning. And, you know, I remember years ago, I've been on Candy Cane Lane and seeing all the people and not recognizing, you know, most of the faces. And I always, and I have a new neighbor moved in, he's renting next door to me, he's from Israel, first time in the country. And he's sitting down on his front porch and he's handing out candy with his kids that don't even speak English, right? And he was just like, this is, this is amazing. This is crazy. Like, all these kids, God, like, he goes, I don't recognize any of these people. And I said, no, you know what? I, I said, people from all over L.A. County will come to different neighborhoods to trick or treat, like popular trick-or-treating neighborhoods. And I said, and I've always felt that El Segundo has the ability to give, right? That we're generous enough that we have that spirit and that joy to give. And so why not give it? And, and I loved it. I felt that, you know, just all the people walking the streets, Center Street was crazy busy. And I think, Councilmember Drew, you said nine hundred and twenty-five pieces of candy?
Yeah, almost a thousand pieces of candy, one by one.
Yeah.
On bungalow.
And so I just wanted to say thank you to our community for embracing the Halloween spirit and for making El Segundo what it is. And, you know, thank you to Gail Eno for always giving out the king size to the kids. World famous. She's a twelve-hundred block of East Mariposa for next year, all you kids that are watching at nine P.M. at night.
That was great. Thank you. Councilmember Pierstik?
Yeah, so on the same lines, I want to thank the Parks and Recs Department for a very successful frolic on Saturday, attended by many, lots of kids. And I also want to thank Elias and your team on the water tower. Talk about community. I think that water tower now has become a beacon for many, I know you and I put, we worked on it for many years ago to get that lit up for the first time. That Halloween was like five years ago, four years ago. And so now it's come so far. And I'm just, it was so beautiful and, you know, you could see it all out throughout the city. And also I want to thank the police department. I was also on Center Street and a cop, one of the cops drove by, you know, with their windows down. And in the passenger seat was a skeleton. So everyone was like, oh my God, look at the skeleton. And it just showed how we are a community. And the police weren't there to be anything but to be a service of people, to people rather than a, you know, a watchdog. And they were just, it just, he was waving at people and it was a very, very calm and happy environment. And just seeing the skeleton in the front seat would just made people laugh and engage with the police. So I just thank you to the city, the city employees for always going that step further to make this a community that people can love and call home.
Thank you, Councilmember Pierstik. Mayor Protsoam Pimentel?
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy that we've gotten all that fun out of the way. Now we can talk about sanitation. The sanitation district, many moons ago in L.A. County, signed a contract for their de-watered waste, take it to a composting farm and facility in the high desert. That has spurned a really lengthy legal battle. I only bring it up because there's a judgment reached against L.A. County sanitation for thirty-six million dollars. We, as a sanitation district, through the, through District Two, which is the administration, administrative district, are appealing that. There's a number of factors that, that, that we go over in closed session about that on the sanitation side, that we think gives us a, a chance at recovery from it. But thirty-six million dollars, admittedly, that's a very, very large district, but we have a piece of that. So what that, you know, what we're assessed after our liability insurance kicks in, you know, there is a deductible for which we would be a participant in. So I will keep you apprised of that, but this is something that this is a battle has, let's, this is not the court's top priority. So, you know, we could, we could be in the plunge long before this is legislated fully. But just to keep you apprised because the thirty-six million dollar judgment is not trivial. Also, on November seventeenth, we will be, we, the royal, we being me, will participate in co-mobility as panelists talking about the local travel network for the regional transportation. We are attempting to, this diplomatically, not be lumped in with sicklivia and all the bicycling because it is somewhat unique, probably because it enjoys powered bicycles, have the ability to travel in the local travel network. So that'll be a big part of the push about why this is different and what our regional initiative is on it. And then lastly, we met with, as some of you know, the governor's special advisor for infrastructure, which is former L.A. Mayor Villarreal Rosa. What they have is through the Infrastructure and Jobs Act, the California allocation, that'll be about fifty billion dollars. This was a bit of a, does anyone have ideas on what projects there could be? And I think people start showing up with some reasonably small potatoes projects. But within the South Bay region, we lined up what we think are regional initiatives. Our research on this shows that a lot of these projects are dominated by the Bay Area because the nine counties of the Bay Area align on regional prerogatives and come in with county size, county size heft for the supervisory districts up there. While L.A. County is only one county, obviously, but with a lot of people. So as subregions, we try to align on what these initiatives are. So we, Inglewood, Culver City, lined up with a series of projects. And the biggest part for that is somewhat unbeknownst to L.A. County sanitation and City of L.A.'s sanitation is we ask for funding on their behalf. Because a big part of the Infrastructure and Jobs Act funding is allocated for water and specifically for water reuse. And so we are attempting to tie direct potable reuse, recycling initiatives into the repair of Hyperion. That's not a trivial expense. I mean, you know, thirty-six million dollar judgment is small. A six billion dollar ask between the three cities is a lot. But we asked for that. We informed Robert Ferrante, who's the chief engineer in L.A. County Sanitation. He was like, hey, sounds good to me. We've asked to inform L.A. City Sanitation. I don't know if they've received that yet, but they may get calls. We, we've had two subsequent meetings and follow-up emails from the governor's office about it. So there is hope on the horizon that, that that money may come in. It'd certainly be a long fix. Mr. Mayor, that is all for me.
Thank you for attending that meeting, by the way, and you did a great job. All right, real quick, Southern Cal Association of Government Emerging Technology Committee, we had an interesting presentation about lithium harvesting and what's happening there. Fascinating subject. South Bay City Council of Government and the Board of Directors, we continue to push on the Regional Housing Trust Fund. More to come on that. We're hoping we got it into law. We're hoping we can actually find funds for that. That'll help us increase housing supply in the South Bay. Today, I toured an incredible new company that came to El Segundo. They've only been here for four months. The founders are from Hungary and Germany. It's called Morpheus Space Incredible Company. It was an introduction from a friend of mine, Ben Marcus, who's in the space and aerospace business. They are a full-fledged space mobility solution. They've raised thirty-four million dollars. They're on Continental Boulevard. They're at forty-five employees now. They're gonna scale to a couple hundred. Huge, huge, like, first autopilot mini cube satellites and avoid a collision. So many cool things that are happening. Another example of El Segundo where big ideas take off. And that was a fascinating meeting. So we're obviously gonna do everything we can to support them and get El Segundo TV in there as well and feature them. A friend reached out about the U.S. Climate Association and the Olympics potentially in two thousand twenty-eight. Did you have a chance to meet? Haven't I even gotten a debrief from that? How did that meeting go?
We, we did meet. And actually, it was a very good meeting. They're out searching for locations. And I think they'll be back to talk kind of the next layer.
That was the CEO, right?
Yes.
Alice's, okay. So does it look like they're, we're in the running? Do they seem impressed?
Yes, absolutely. Liked the location, the facility. They need, there's certain kind of, you know, boundaries that they need and turn, and, and surfaces that they need. But it's a pretty cool potential, yeah. And, and we followed up with him. And I know, actually Barbara, our deputy city director, gave him a tour of the city too for potential
Thank you for being available last minute. Really appreciate that. Today, I also had a call at the L.A. Air, the, the head of L.A., excuse me, the head of Air Force Partnerships. And I gotta bring you up to speed on that one too, Daryl. But they have a, and you might know about this, given your service, but they have a specific program for building partnerships with communities. And they have about sixty examples of where it's worked. They're gonna send us some of those case studies. And they're gonna help us with Colonel Walsh and Colonel Walsh's staff to help build a lasting partnership, a legacy, something that will continue. We, the strongest relationship we have with the base was during BRAC, when Mike Gordon was alive and mayor and this council, because that base was on the closure list. And since then, we've somewhat lost our way because every two years, they've got a new base commander. And then we don't have continuity up here. So this partnership should help with that. More to come on that. Lastly, October twentieth, we had a meeting. I say we, another mayor and I, and all of Holly Mitchell's staff, effectively about six charitable organizations that focus on bringing disadvantaged youth into aquatics. And it was at Marina Del Rey. So it's teaching disadvantaged youth, mostly from inner city, how to swim, how to sail, how to row, and how to surf. And it was an incredible meeting. And she had it at the Marina Del Rey Boathouse, right there in Marina Del Rey, which is a county resource. And so I think it's really cool that she's doing and more to come on that as well. And so we continue to build that relationship. She, her style, unlike Supervisor Han, where we would go to her, her style is to bring the mayors together and convene. She's done that twice now. It's kind of like what Mayor Garcetti did, actually. He would do that on a quarterly or semi-annual basis as well. So we're learning to work with her organization and so far, so good on that. That's all I have this evening. City Attorney?
Nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, City Manager, follow-up?
I also have nothing else to report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.